Thank you. Good morning, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Lepore County Commissioners Meeting to order for Wednesday, May 6th. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
After the pledge, could you remain standing for a moment of silence for Gene Jonas, who passed away yesterday? He was a member of the Plan Commission for several years, and also one of the founding members of the Lepore County Regional Sewer and Water District. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Morzinski?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like us to consider the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
My President, I'd like to add one item, and that is a resolution honoring nurses during this National Nurses Week. With that, I make a motion to, let me just maybe we need to add this first, and then I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second that tradition.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include a resolution for National Nurses Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved.
My President, now I make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Moving on to the approval of minutes, we have two meeting minutes to approve, May 8th and May 22nd. And in addition, the special, the regular meeting on April 15th, the meeting on the 22nd was a special meeting. Approval of the minutes?
Just a correction, my President.
Sure.
You mentioned May, it was April 8th.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, April.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
So we're approving minutes for the month of April rather than May. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yep, motion has been approved. Next on the agenda, consideration of claims.
We have payroll ending April 24th, 2020, in the amount of $1,179,634.75. Then we have miscellaneous claims in the amount of $1,751,65.78.
My President, I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second motion?
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. All three commissioners have reviewed all of claims before the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been approved and claims are approved. Before we move on to public comment, Commissioner Morzinski would like to do a short presentation.
Thank you. As a VFW member for 31 years, I suspect, and this past year I was named the State Chief of Staff, so I have several different programs that I have access to for nominations for different events. And the one that we did this year that was really a big hit, we nominated the Policeman of the Year. And a couple months ago, at our Roland Prairie VFW, we gave an award to Captain Cicero. He was our Policeman of the Year for post 9423. And then forwarded those, that recommendation nomination on to the district which went on to the state level. And so I get to do some official duty here. I'll do it down there.
Okay.
Captain Cicero. I have, first of all, an award from the State Commander for the Veterans of the Foreign War, Department of Indiana Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, hereby awarded to Detective Captain Patrick Cicero in recognition for his dedication and unyielding adherence to the highest ideals of law enforcement in maintaining, preserving, and protecting the lawful rights of all citizens. Therefore, it is with gratitude and appreciation that the Department of Indiana Veterans of the Foreign Wars of the United States awards the 2020 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year to Patrick Cicero, signed by the Department of Indiana Commander David Capshaw. When I opened up the package, guess what? Another award. This is from the National Commander in Chief, William Doc Schmidt, from his office in Kansas City, Missouri. The BFW National Law Enforcement Award awarded to Detective Captain Patrick Cicero in recognition and sincere appreciation for his dedication and selfless service to the Lepore County Sheriff's Department. During Patrick Cicero's outstanding career, he has maintained a record of highly professional and exemplary service to the community and the nation. His extraordinary commitment clearly illustrates the proud core values and tradition of law enforcement professionals, further highlighted by his degree of admiration and respect by both his peers and the local public he served. Detective Captain Patrick Cicero is truly an exceptional example of all who serve the community, and his honor reflects the proud ideals and high standards of the Veterans of the Foreign Wars of the United States. This is the National Law Enforcement Award. There's our National Chief, Doc Schmidt, who's about as tall as me, and just about as tall. Proud to have you as a friend.
Thank you. I am kind of out of my element right here. Was not expecting this at all. And I'll try to be brief. This is a shock to me. When I think of awards, I've never wanted to accept awards. I never thought of this as an award, to this job to attain awards. But if anybody deserves an award, I always thank an officer who puts his life on the line, out there every day, front line. So many people I need to thank is the sheriffs that served, Sheriff Arnold Molinar, of course Sheriff Ford. Thank God, of course. I really need to, really, special recognition to all the detectives. If anything, I want to accept this on behalf of my division, my detectives who work so hard to make me look good, and all the detectives I've served with for the past 18 years, and in our administration and officers. Mostly, and a lot of people don't understand, the mountain height, and the bullet into law enforcement, and my family, my wife, they have sacrificed so much for the community as well, because I'm always the one, I'm always working. And so this is for my family, my wife, and kids. Thank you.
Captain Cicero, on behalf of the many people all across Lepore County who you have served for all these years, thank you so very much. We're very, very proud, and congratulations.
My President, I had the opportunity of working with him closely when I served as a county coroner, and I just want to echo the feelings of both Commissioner Morzinski and Commissioner Mathias. Thank you, Captain Cicero. Appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on, we have public comment. Would you like Dr. Doss to speak at this time?
Yeah, you know, Dr. Doss has a lot of other responsibilities going on. Dr. Doss, are you on the Zoom call?
Hi.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, good morning.
Are you on here?
Yeah, good morning. You know, the reason, Dr. Doss, welcome. Thank you for joining us. And the reason we wanted you to join us is to give an update on what's going on in our correctional facilities. Most of the people in Lepore County are concerned because of what's happening at those facilities, and especially not only for the inmates, but also the lot of staff who have been impacted, and most of them are members of our community, our neighbors, and some of them are my patients. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. If you can give us an update and maybe take a few questions.
Absolutely. And thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Kristen Doss. I'm the Chief Medical Officer for Indiana Department of Correction. And with me today, I have John Ferguson. He's our Chief Leo Officer. And together, we've kind of been working with local communities and sharing the message in what we are doing. So thank you for having us today. And I will start globally with what we're doing, and then drill down to a couple of specific sites that are right in Lepore County for you all. So what are we doing globally? We are screening all persons entering into the facility. We currently don't have any visitation or volunteer activities at this time, so mainly that's staff. And I'll kind of explain exactly what that screening looks like in just a minute. We are providing all PPE facility-wide at both ISP and Westville. All staff and offenders have access to masks. And then I'll get into staff PPE in just a second. We are promoting hand hygiene. Everyone has access to water, soap, hand sanitizer, greater than 60% alcohol-based. That's something that typically we do not do in a correctional setting, just for safety and security reasons. But understanding this pandemic and the public health crisis at present is something that we have rolled out to both ISP and Westville. We are providing ongoing education to all staff and offenders in regards to COVID-19 signs and symptoms to look out for, and promoting respiratory hygiene, how to cover your cough, and, you know, when to seek medical services. We have delivered this information in various platforms, on tablets for offenders, on signage within the facility. Before you come in, there are signs to say, you know, do not come in if you have, if you are ill. We are acting quickly to assess, to test, and to isolate all sick offenders. We are also quarantining anyone who has been exposed. These folks are also monitored on a frequent basis by our medical service team. Additionally, we, I personally talk to the Indiana State Department of Health Senior Leadership, so either their Commissioner or their Deputy Commissioner every single day. We coordinate our response with them. We make sure that they have access to our information. Our statewide platform is called EMRE Source. We report in there every single day what numbers look like at every single one of our facilities statewide. We receive feedback from them, just briefings with them to chat about what we're doing. We will utilize the State Department of Health for straight teams to come out to test, to help with infection control, just to have all the stakeholders, so to speak, at the table. We have worked with other states and jurisdictions, and jails, quite frankly, to strategize what our medical best practice is and to ensure that we're all coordinated in our response. Additionally, we have an IDOC Technical Response Team, which does, is a hazmat team and does decontamination of our facilities. They have been up to the region quite frequently. We also are, you know, doing things like this to make sure that the lines of communication with families and stakeholders and staff and offenders are there. And then finally, we are promoting social distancing. So we've limited our roll call. We don't want to have 50 officers, you know, gathered in one room. So we've changed the way that we're kind of doing correction, so limiting that roll call, what that looks like. We have dedicated staff in the unit, so that for contact tracing purposes, we can tell who came from where. We have marked boundaries within the facilities that can help offenders know where that six-foot distance and boundary would be. We have limited the number of offenders moving from one time, at one time, so cohorting them based off their unit. So that's what we're doing at large. I also want to share some information specifically to drill down as far as what we're doing for our staff. So again, we are screening them up on entry. And what does that mean? That means that we're asking them those questions. Are you feeling ill? Do you have a fever? Any cough, any shortness of breath? Again, the signage at the front, we're taking their temperature. We've worked with our state Human Resource Agency to make sure that folks' livelihoods are not in jeopardy. If they're at ill and can't come to work, we want to make sure that they still have a way to support their families and not per staying if they do need to take time off. We've also arranged hazard pay for our staff, and that's been approved via the Governor's Office. The state prison has a body scanner up there, and we've limited hands-on shakedowns at both facilities. In regards to PPE, a mask is now part of the uniform. We additionally have N95s available for certain areas that do have exposure. We are providing gowns, facials. We are also making PPE. So several of our correctional facilities are making PPE that is being utilized statewide. All staff have access to hot water, soap, hand sanitizer, as I mentioned. We are, again, promoting communication. We have individual ways to communicate. We have an anonymous email box where folks can share ideas if they want to send information anonymously. We have Infocast, which is an online version, kind of like a Zoom like this, where staff can join every other day to learn about what the agency's doing, and ask questions, and have that two-way communication. We have a COVID-19 email and phone box. We have a COVID-19 website, which shares information about our comprehensive COVID-19 plan. We have a one-call messaging system that will actually call staff and provide updates. So before they start their shift, or maybe even after they end their shift, they kind of have related information. We make sure that all staff have access to testing. If they feel like they've been exposed or showing symptoms, we make sure that, you know, there's no barriers there in regards to testing. And then anyone that, who we know is positive, that's communicated to the local health department within 24 hours. Let's see. We also finally are looking to get mental health resources in place at the facilities up there, just to make sure that staff feel supported. This is a stressful time, we know that. We want to make sure that staff and their families have access to mental health. Anything I left out?
No, I think that pretty well covered everything. The Department of Correction is taking the care of both the offenders and our staff very seriously. And like the doctor just said, we are thinking, this is a completely new environment for us, and so we're thinking very differently. We're doing things that, you know, we would have never thought before, like including hand sanitizer, alcohol-based hand sanitizer inside of our facilities, thinking about the ways that we would typically have staff enter our grounds, but also just looking at the staffing itself, because we are able to do our operation if our staff don't feel supported and safe as well.
I know, Dr. Cora, you asked about numbers tested, and I want to make sure that I provide that information to the group as well. So at Westville, current numbers, we have 23 offenders who are quarantined. So that means they've been exposed, but they do not have symptoms.
Doctor, would you be able to explain maybe a little bit, before we go, the numbers, what the difference is between quarantined and isolated?
Absolutely.
Just so we can better understand that.
Yes, sure. So folks who are isolated are folks who are currently having symptoms, so cough, shortness of breath, fever, you know, loss of taste, smell, any of those kinds of signs and symptoms that are consistent with COVID-like illness. So the folks who are isolated are sick. The folks, and they're in a single area, so they're housed alone, so they're separated from everyone else, so they're by themselves. Folks who are quarantined are, have been exposed to someone who may be sick, but they don't have symptoms themselves. And they can kind of stay in one unit, but we have them move together. So for, at Westville, we currently have 23 offenders who are quarantined. We have eight offenders who are isolated. We have 149 offenders whose symptoms have resolved. We have 168 who have been released from all medical precautions such as isolation and quarantine. And that group is mostly coming from those who have been resolved. We have tested 198 offenders at Westville, and 142 have recovered. At Indiana State Prison, there are zero folks in quarantine.
Dr. Doss, if I could, Dr. Doss, one quick question. Of the 198 who were tested, how many came back positive? Do you have that number?
So of the 198, 166 were positive.
166, okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
I have a question, I have a question, Dr. Doss, about Westville Correctional. This is Commissioner Mathias. Out of the population, so you have 198 tested, what's your current daily population of inmates, offenders?
It's 3,100.
So what is the percentage of offenders who have been tested out of that 3,100? What's that percentage, like 8% or?
It should be, yeah, probably, kind of just doing a rough number, 180.
About 78%.
Of 3,100.
So is there a plan to test all staff and all offenders?
At this time, there is not a plan to test all staff and all offenders. We are utilizing CDC guidelines and ISP recommendations, which at this point are to test those who are symptomatic or who have been exposed and with a prolonged exposure. So that's been our plan. If there's anyone that present to meet that criteria, we absolutely are testing them. So if any offender comes up and says, you know, I'm having these symptoms, we screen them, we find those signs to be present, then we will test them. There's no delay there.
Thank you.
For Indiana State Prison, I will get some information there as well. So we currently have zero folks who are on quarantine. We have three folks who are isolated. We have four who have resolved the COVID-like symptoms. We have six there who have been tested. And we have, let's see, I think that's most of the information there. Now, what I do want to do, too, is take this time, explain the difference of the facilities, just so that you guys have that information as well. So Westville is very dorm-based. So that's why if COVID-19, it was brought into the facility some way, somehow, because of course our offenders, you know, were immune, so to speak, at one point. So once COVID got into Westville, it's more dorm-like, so much easier to spread. ISP, we've been able to contain the spread and slow the spread there, so to speak, because there's many more cells, so individual cells, at ISP versus at Westville.
I have a question, Dr. Doss. You know, my question pertains mostly to staff. We do hear from staff members that they are concerned that they are exposed and they are not being tested. So do you, if a staff member has a concern, is it easy to get them tested?
Actually, yes. So as far as staff members go, every staff member who would be concerned that they would have been in contact with somebody who's COVID-positive or is having any symptoms, they are able to get a test, and they do qualify for the testing for that.
Okay, all right.
And it's simple. All they have to do is email our COVID-19 mailbox, DOC mailbox. Every single staff has been provided that address. They get it every single day at 10:00 a.m. We send out information so they can reply to that. But if they email that inbox, we will personally, I will personally write a prescription to get anyone tested who feels like they need testing. Additionally, the State Board of the State Department of Health has also done some drive-through testing up there, and I know that they're using a service provider now to enhance testing up there, too. So any staff who feels like they've been exposed or had symptoms can be tested.
And, you know, this is, I think, another time that we want to put a fire line on what we've been doing to communicate with staff. We are having specialists go into every single one of our facilities, both day and night, to talk to staff, to explain to what the policies are, protocols, ways they can get more assistance, explaining even some of the human resource aspects of it, and explain about the disease and the best ways to stop the spread. Like we said, we have the COVID-19 email box where staff are able to communicate directly with someone if they have any concerns. We have another email box that we are using, that we've utilized before this. All of our emails of the executive staff are available online if they need to reach out to any of us or have concerns, especially if they would not feel comfortable, for some reason, going through the chain of command. But we also are doing, we work on a DOC Infocast. We do that twice a day. So the staff who have questions are able to get the information directly from DOC, from a centralized location, but they're also able to respond with their own questions. And we can help answer those in sort of the benefit of having that twice a day. So if you are either on a night shift or a day shift, you have access to that information as well.
Dr. Doss, I have a couple of other questions. One is, first of all, let me thank you for joining and also your regular communication. It's been good to partner with you also during this crisis, and I appreciate that. One thing is, I have explained to you before that we are having some difficulty getting the numbers from both the correction facilities, both staff as well as inmates. So if, I think you have, you had set up a system, but it's still, it's not working the way it should. So I would appreciate if you can look into that, so that our county health department gets the numbers on a regular basis and accurate numbers. And lastly, my request to you is, if possible, if you can come and visit both these facilities yourself. And because I appreciate all the information you provided and all the mechanisms that you have put in place. But I think having you personally visit the two facilities would be helpful for you to take a look at it yourself and see if there are any, if there's anything you can suggest to make things even more foolproof. So those are my two suggestions to you. And thanks again for joining us.
I have a few questions.
Thank you. I just want to, again, echo the sentiments. I think that our partnership has been wonderful. I appreciate you reaching out and getting information that you need directly, and we're happy to share that. Any issues with getting difficulty with numbers reported and things like that, I will definitely reach out to Jenny Smith to drill down on that. She has my contact information. I have her contact information. I have not heard from her recently with that, or at least this week. So I will follow back up to make sure that's in place. I will also say publicly that the Indiana State Department of Health is responsible for entering our data into the Health Department reporting system. So if there is a glitch there, I'm happy to spearhead a conversation again. But really, the State Department of Health is helping us with that. And then two, I would love to get up there to Westville. However, every single day, we're part of the governor's press conference, so I have to be located in Indiana or Indianapolis for right now. But trust me, I will get up there. We have contract monitors who are doing site visits and audits of infection control processes and things like that as well.
Commissioner Mathias has some questions. I'll turn it over to her. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Doss. I want to let you know that we appreciate your willingness to talk to us. We appreciate your information and the goal of being transparent. We really appreciate that. You've got a big job, and we understand that these are trying times for everyone. However, the three commissioners that are here are representing 111,000-some people. Your staff are our neighbors. They are our family members. They are our friends. And they don't have the opportunity, either as a parent of an inmate, a partner of an inmate, a wife of an inmate, or a staff member who walks in and out of those gates at both facilities every day. They don't have much of an opportunity to speak directly to you. So we are their voice. And I guess what I really want to talk about is, can you tell me the number of deaths at both facilities? Let's talk about that for just a moment.
Sure. So to back up just a little bit, those staff members do So, to back up, um, just a little bit, um, those staff members do, um, have an opportunity to talk directly to our senior leadership team every other day. So be that info cast, it's just like a Zoom. So our senior leadership, um, our regional leadership, facility leadership, all the wardens, um, can, you know, call in and be a part of that, as can all six staff. So if you are a custody officer, a nurse, a physician, you have direct access to senior leadership, um, every other day. In regards to deaths, we've had three confirmed COVID deaths at Westville and zero confirmed COVID deaths at Indiana State Prison. And additionally, this information is posted on our website, so that if anyone in the room wants to keep track on that, it is, uh, public facing.
And I would also just echo, you know, we, we are doing, uh, we're trying our best, and I plan on, um, also speaking with our communications department to make sure there's nothing that we're missing, um, you know, regarding messaging to our employees. But I would also encourage all of you that if there are questions or if you're talking to employees, uh, to mention the info cast, mention the different ways that we can communicate. Um, I'm on the info cast, I try to get on there when I, you know, pretty much every time, it's twice a day, um, but I try to get on there. We try to, you know, we are addressing those issues, but the more you guys can help us get that information out there, that we want our employees to reach out to us, we want them to be engaged with us. Um, there, there is no one that is going to benefit if employees don't know this information. Um, like we said, we're walking the facility day and night, trying to have personal conversations, uh, trying to get this information out. So if you are hearing from them, um, I encourage you to, uh, to relay that information as well.
Madam President, Mr. Novak also wanted to ask a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Novak, you're on.
Yes, thank you. Um, Randy Novak, President of the Council. I just want to, and I had to step away for a second, so forgive me if this question was already asked or addressed, but, uh, you tested 198 out of Westville, 168 tested positive, correct?
166, yeah.
To me, roughly, 160, yeah. But it seems as though, officially at Westville, the state is not being proactive, they're just being reactive. So when you say if somebody has symptoms, then we test them. When they have symptoms, to me, being 33 years in the fire service plus, when you have symptoms, it's already done. I mean, in other words, there's a chance they're already infected and everything else. I just believe that a lot more testing needs to be done to get ahead of this out there, because if not, it's just going to continue to mutate and, and, and all we're doing is, is, you know, waiting for something to happen and then we're reacting to it. We need to be positive with the, the instant tests that are out there and everything, and LaPorte Hospital offering to go out and do some testing. I would hope that, at Westville, specifically with the outbreak there and the dorm situation that you mentioned, that maybe there'd be a different approach there.
Yeah, so if there's any partner who's willing to come inside and test, um, all 3,100, we are definitely open to that conversation.
They were told, they offered and they were told, "No, thank you."
My understanding, that was for staff, um, not offenders?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to find out. We just have, we have a county.
Yeah, yeah.
Weekend, yeah, that's.
Sure. Yeah, I spoke to them directly and it was for staff, um, not offenders, but definitely, if you have a lead on someone who wants to come in and test all 3,100, by all means, have them call me today. Um, what I will say is that what we're doing inside the prison is the same exact thing that's happening outside the prison. It's nothing different. So the State Department of Health, um, local health departments are really focusing resources on testing those with symptoms or testing those who have, uh, a prolonged exposure to someone who is positive. Um, the test is a snapshot in time. So a positive, we know is positive, but a negative, that really doesn't tell us much information about where they are, are they infectious, you know, what do we do with them? So essentially, the test doesn't really give us as much information. If you test negative, if you go out and you do a mass screening, right, we test all 3,100, okay, great, but then what do we do with those that are negative? Do we do it again tomorrow and test all 3,100? Do we do it again? The resources are not there nationwide, countywide, statewide, let alone, uh, for this facility. So, I think that, um, in an ideal setting, if we had, you know, everything that we could do that, we, we absolutely would, but right now, that's not the standard that I can even, um, offer to, you know, everyone, say, right, let alone, um, for folks inside our facility.
And Commissioner, you're, you know, you're, your mind is exactly right on this, um, and that's why our quarantine protocols are so important, um, and that's why, Dr. Dos was explaining the importance of separating, um, offenders who might have had exposure and monitoring them constantly. Um, it's the best use of resources to make sure that we're preserving those tests for people who might then later develop symptoms, but also quarantining those, uh, possibly sick offenders away from offenders who have not been exposed. Um, that is, that's why the CDC has recommended that as one of their guidelines and why it's so important to stopping the spread in these facilities, but you're exactly right.
But, but if we're testing people in meat facilities, I, I just don't think you could have the same approach in a, in incarcerated setting to where these people don't have a choice, and as you do with people out in the public. I think it's totally different, and to get ahead of this, um, I just think that if we're doing this for processing plants, we can do it for, I just think more needs to be done. We need to be more proactive, especially when we know that 168 roughly out of 198 tested positive. That's huge. That, that's, you know, so, that is my.
And Dr. Dos, uh, one other, uh, one other part I wanted to share with you was, um, I know there are some positive cases you're monitoring in the infirmary at Westville. Uh, if you can please direct your staff there to err on the side of caution, um, and if they are symptomatic, uh, if they need to be brought to the hospital, that way they are brought in earlier rather than later, uh, because I have seen patients with COVID-19 and they go down fast. Once the respiratory distress starts, they go down fast. So if you could encourage them to err on the side of caution and then get them to the hospital sooner than later. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, if we can test someone and get them over to the infirmary, um, and then out, then that's ideally what we want to do.
Alright. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Dos.
Thank you very much for joining, I appreciate that. Then we'll stay in touch.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have, uh, department head reports, uh, excuse me, public comments, public comments, sorry. Uh, next on the agenda, we have public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time?
Um, I would have a question if, uh, Dr. Dos is still on the line.
Um, I don't know if Dr. Dos is on the line.
I think they probably left.
Okay, alright, yeah, Joe Corr, the Park County citizens.
Excuse me, Mr. Corr, just a moment, Dr. Dos is on the line. And, Dr. Dos, there's a question, um, from a, uh, I think a member of the media. Go ahead, Mr. Keel.
Um, I have two questions for Dr. Dos and Mr. Ferguson. Um, firstly, you had indicated that 166 out of 198 tested positive at Westville, that's 84% testing positive. Uh, we received a copy of an email sent on Thursday between your legal staff and the Indiana House Minority Leader, Representative Gia Quinta, in which an IDOC staff told the representative that 18% were testing positive at Westville. Why the difference in that percentage? And does the DOC plan to fulfill the Westville Indicator's records request for full testing numbers?
Yes, so, um, I can take that. Um, I believe that the number that they were discussing was probably, uh, and I apologize, I would, I don't believe that came from, I, I would have to check who that came from, as far as the letter goes, to Gia Quinta. Um, I think that might have been our legislative staff, not our legal staff. Um, but that probably had closer to do with the amount of people in the entire facility, but again, I would have to, uh, look at that. Now, I can respond to whether or not we will be, uh, issuing our testing numbers, and, uh, we do plan on, uh, getting those onto the website for the public, um, I think very shortly, today, uh, maybe, maybe 1 o'clock, so, um, there you go.
Thank you. And then the second question is probably for Dr. Dos. Um, up until Sunday, 1,485 inmates were quarantined at Westville. On Monday, after about 14 days, the number had gone down to 17. Does this mean that there were no new cases found in any of the quarantined dorms or buildings or cohorts over the past two weeks?
Great question, Justin. I was actually, uh, waiting for you to ask it on the buzzer, that's why I am prepared. Um, so, actually, it's a, it's a positive, it's a step in the right direction, right? So it shows that our efforts are working. Those folks who were on quarantine, um, were being monitored, um, because they had been exposed. Um, so after being monitored for 14 days and having medical go out and check on them and that, those sorts of things, we were able to then medically clear them, um, from the quarantine status, um, and thus, therefore, they were removed from that quarantine bracket. So essentially, they had been monitored for 14 days, medical had been checking in on them, none of that group developed symptoms, so therefore they were released back to, um, out of quarantine status.
So just to clarify, no one in those, those dorms at all tested positive? That everybody came back clear in the entire dorm during that 14?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that, because I don't have the specific, you know, facts and numbers in front of me, but by and large, of that, of that larger number, um, the folks who were removed, right, who came off of quarantine, were folks who had no symptoms.
Okay, and one last question for you, which is, how does the IDOC determine what's anyone that's recovered? Do you guys do an additional test, or is there a certain period of time you're waiting after symptoms resolve?
So, great question. So we go by CDC guidelines, which are online, um, at the CDC, of course, the correctional guidelines, and then two on our DOC website. Um, but essentially, it is, uh, three days or 72 hours of no symptoms, without any, uh, fever-reducing medications or anything like that, and then seven days since the, uh, beginning of symptom onset. Um, now, DOC, because of the setting that we are and, uh, the, uh, and whatnot, what we do is we go additional steps to keep them a little longer, right? So we're gonna, so while it's, you know, seven days, we may go ahead and keep them 10 days, just to kind of keep a closer eye to make sure, or even 14. So it just really depends based on clinical symptoms, but that's the minimum that we would do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. Uh, Dr. Dos, I have one more question. Um, you mentioned the, um, the six, six have been tested at, um, Indiana State Prison, is that number correct?
Yes.
So that's six, six inmates, and how many inmates are in the population there? I'm following up on Councilman Novak's questions.
We can give you a total number, hold on one second, we're giving total numbers first.
Uh, 2,000, uh, 2,400.
So 2,400 are at ISP and six have been tested?
That's correct.
Um, so that, you mentioned that three are in isolation and four are resolved, so that's seven. So those folks were not tested or were tested? Because that number doesn't, doesn't match.
Sure. So it's resolved symptoms, so I would have to pull the chart specifically to see, you know, who was tested or who wasn't tested, because you're right, on one line I have six tested, on another spreadsheet I have seven tested, so I'm going to actually go with the seven number, um, because the three plus the four is seven, um, but I can follow up with you.
So, um.
Six or seven.
So 2,400 inmates and seven have been tested, let's say seven is the higher number. That is, uh, you know, Councilman Novak talked about that being such a tiny amount. Is there a plan to, um, we're hearing from some of your staff, I'll be really point-blank from ISP, that there is a goal there to keep the numbers low, the testing numbers low so that we don't find out that there's an outbreak there. Is, is there a way that, um, those who want to be tested, or is there a plan to test those who are, have been exposed in either protective custody or in, uh, I think it's E-dorm, where there's 600 inmates that living, living in close proximity to one another?
And let me state very firmly that there is no benefit for the Department of Correction to not know the amount of people who are positive. Um, we are not trying to in any way hide any numbers. Uh, these, I mean, not only can we not provide appropriate treatment if we don't know the numbers, um, but also it would be dangerous for the staff, so to, there is no, I guess, goal, or there is nothing that we would gain from, from trying to hide those numbers. Um, and again, I would encourage, uh, if you are talking with individuals who, you know, have those concerns, to remind them of the, uh, you know, the way they communicate with us directly, because, you know, we want to put those concerns at ease, especially because, as Dr. Dos said, this a lot of times can be a health, uh, you know, not only the health concern, but there's also a mental health component too. And, you know, if, um, employees are believing that, that can add additional stress to their job and to their life, and the most we can put that at ease, we would want to be able to do that. Um, so I'm glad that you, you brought that up to, to our attention, and I hope that if, you know, other council members or people, the public are hearing that, that they're able to let those, uh, employees know that we want to be able to answer these questions and be able to answer those concerns.
The only thing that I would add is that, you know, at the end of the day, I chose to do this work, right? I am a physician, first and foremost, I am a public servant, right? And, and my goal into coming in here and serving the underserved in our prison system is much bigger than anything else, right? It's almost like a mission, right? A personal mission, uh, my faith and all of those sorts of things. So when I hear, it does sadden me to hear that staff, um, would be of the opinion that, you know, we are, we're covering things up or anything like that. My number one goal is to be a physician for the Department of Correction, to make sure that we are providing excellent quality healthcare to all of the offenders that we serve, and that they have the same access to any healthcare that they would if they were out in LaPorte County, so to speak. Um, so that's something that we definitely will follow up on, that is definitely not the intent or the goal. Um, again, ISP, when we had the first positive there, we went out immediately and screened the entire, um, unit. Um, now again, ISP, you have to remember, isolation is essentially all of ISP. They're all single cell for the most part, or a large, large majority are single cells. Um, so when we went out and screened immediately, once we learned, and I think this was late night, these nursing staff went out, um, no one had any symptoms, no one was feeling ill. And the moment that they do, we test them. This is not a, we don't want to test or anything like that. If there is someone who has symptoms, even someone who may not have symptoms but has had a prolonged exposure, we test them. And if you're hearing otherwise, I want, let me know, because I want to address it as soon as possible. I definitely do not want an outbreak at LaPorte County, just like I don't want it at any of Marion County, Hendrix County. That's not what we are here to do, we're here to serve.
I really appreciate that comment, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much for joining.
One thing real quick, if, if Westville, it's my understanding, Westville has a rapid test machine, for lack of a better medical word.
Sure.
So they can test, you know, they've got something that we don't have access to out here. So why is it that, on a daily basis, you don't say, the staff, and I understand you're limited, just like everybody else, but why don't they say, "We're going to take 10 people, the 10 that they think are most vulnerable or something," and just start testing daily? Because you have this equipment that, that is sitting there. If you, if you're not testing people, it's just, and nobody has symptoms, I think, uh, I, I still think we need to be proactive. And you have the.
Sure, absolutely. So we are, um, unfortunately, I don't have thousands of test kits, um, I don't even have hundreds of test kits. Um, so these Abbott ID Now machines are the rapid, uh, rapid, uh, kit, testing machines. Um, however, again, we are using those, right? So we are using that machine every single day to test folks who come up with symptoms, or we test, you know, if it's a staff, we will test the staff member. Um, if there's any kind of question, we will test the staff member. Um, but to say we're going to do a random sampling and test every single day, we will be out of test kits by Friday if we were to do that, based on the, the staff's side, um, at Westville. Now, if there's someone who comes sick, absolutely not an issue.
Are you still moving inmates from facility to facility, or they, is that kind of on hold right now?
Overall, that's on hold. Um, now, if, what I will say is, if there's an urgent medical need, so if we have someone who discharges, for example, from ISP, from the hospital, and they need an infirmary, we will send them to Westville. Um, or if there's a safety and security issue, um, that another casualty can't handle, then they will be transferred to a facility. But by and large, those are the two main reasons we're doing transfers at this time. We're not having, um, any other movement and on, on a larger scale.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, thanks again.
Thank you, Dr. Dos.
Should we stick around, or, um, is this the end of public comments, or?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, you're, uh, you're, it's okay if you want to go ahead and do other stuff, and, uh, we'll stay in touch, and if there is, uh, any questions or any questions or concerns, we'll definitely be in touch with you.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Corr, back to public comment.
Good morning. Ed Core, 3768 North, 525 West, Lepore County. Here today as a citizen, I just wanted to take a moment, I hear what's going on, I watched the stress from all three of you commissioners, and many people throughout Lepore County, and I just want to say on behalf of Betty and I, and a lot of our friends, thank you so very much for staying on top of this pandemic, and now the economic part of this. We need to address both, there's no question about it, and I think there's a way to do it, and I really, really do appreciate old Betty and I, what you folks have done here, certainly you with the double light that you're burning day after day after day, and your commitment to help Lepore County, so thank you all very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Core. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Is there, sure, come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Joe Haney, 2695 West Juliet Road. Briefly, I know public comments have went long enough here this morning, unfortunately, but I rise to speak today on a couple of the agenda items here as to be of the old business. It's come to my attention that postcard mailings are possibly coming up, and the estimates that, that I've been hearing show that the postcards alone would be about $15,000, and depending on the current registered voter count, we could see $20,000 to $25,000 in postage costs alone on top of the cards themselves. I'd like to point out that in 2018 primary election, we saw only 16.1% of registered voters actually turn out and vote in the primary, and of those, only 1,843 actually voted by mail, roughly 2.5%. As, as we've all seen, TV, newspapers, radio, social media has done a fantastic job of educating the voters on some of the new state changes for mail-in ballot access as opposed to just standard absentee ballots, and I think they've done a great job of that. I, I believe that if this money is taken from the current funds of the election board, I have no doubt that they will be back to replenish those funds in order to fully satisfy their requirements for the general election. This was a general election coming up, perhaps this would be something that would be even more appropriate to do, but in my opinion, considering this is a primary election with very few contested races, and especially the fact that this is for Democrats and Republicans, not a general election, this is not, this honestly, it's fiscally irresponsible to put this out there right now. We have a current payout, this, this period of $1,750,000 in just miscellaneous funds alone, and I really think that with probably at least 80% of these mailings going straight in the trash, and most people having already filed for their ballot requests, probably not a good idea. For item C, as to the Amicus brief filing, I don't think that the effort and time and money is being invested in such an endeavor would be worthwhile to the county's time, resources, or the taxpayers' funds. I, I think the county, it is not the place, the county, to speak on behalf of the entirety of the populace of Lepore County on something such as the ACA, especially at a time when last week, the tax, American taxpayers were put on the hook yet again for billions more dollars for yet another failed portion, the risk corridor program that we've seen now that unfortunately we're all gonna have to pay for, and help put some more money back in the insurance companies' pockets. I think something that would be a much better part of the commission's time would be what you're looking, hopefully looking at here in item D, which would be the Office of Community and Rural Affairs grant announcements. I believe that's what's being referenced, at least in Agenda Item D, the OCRA grants, definitely more worth your time to look into. The wording here that I'm seeing in the agenda is, is somewhat clumsy, and perhaps maybe that was for brevity's sake, but hopefully the commission will keep in mind that the local funding requirements to secure some of these grants and the state allowable limits is definitely worth more looking into and keeping that in mind before moving forward on it. I, I am curious, it says here that it would be, these, these mailings for the election, for the primary election notifications were at the request of the commissions, I would, I am curious as to which commissioner or commissioners may have requested that.
Certainly, which one?
Yeah, Mr. Haney, I hope you'll stay when we discuss item C in the new business about ACA, I have a lot to say about it, and why it matters to our county and the people in our county, because there is such ignorance about that particular topic, it is amazing. And I want to let people know that every family will be affected if the ACA is struck down by the Supreme Court of the United States. And so please stay back, and I'm going to talk about that. Regarding the mailing, I know it costs some money, and, but here's what I want to tell you, I see COVID patients in the hospital, one patient, just one patient, sir, if they go into ICU, it'll cost $100,000. Okay? So we have to look at the big picture here, and if we can save people's lives, if we can prevent them from spreading, and if there's a safer way to exercise their right to vote, and at the same time, if it makes economic sense by preventing hospital bills, I think we should pursue that, and that's the reason why I have encouraged that.
Thank, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and hopefully...
Thank you. But please stay back about the ACA, it's, there's a lot of information I want to share with you.
Sure. And as you move down your agenda list, I'm here for following up on the governor's recommendations for reopening Lepore County, hopefully we can do that as quickly and safely as possible, because a lot of people out there, I'm hearing from them, that are really hurting and they need to get back to work as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? I have a letter that was sent to the commissioners that I would like to read into the record, it's dated May 1st, to all three of the commissioners, subject is coronavirus-related restrictions. Dear Commissioners, I am writing to ask that you consider placing more restrictions locally than the directives issued by the state of Indiana due to the following factors. Number one, we are directly bordering the state with the seventh highest number of cases and the third highest number of deaths. We are connected via transit, commerce, tourism, and social ties to the state with the fourth highest number of cases and the sixth highest number of deaths, deaths, the bulk of which are in the Chicago area. We have a current outbreak at Westville Correctional which may continue to spread into the community in larger numbers via unintentional transmission from staff members. Our next point, our case counts slash deaths in the county have not leveled off or decreased, they continue to rise even as these restrictions are in effect. They will rise at a more rapid pace if we open up the, to the extent envisioned by the state of Indiana. Next, PPE hand sanitizer wipes disinfectant are in short supply for non-medical businesses and private citizens, and we should not be putting people in a position where they feel pressured by economic forces to resume business before they can obtain the supplies they need to be safe. It is a fool's game to look at these circumstances and hope that our outcomes will be better than they have been in other places around the world. With no cure and no treatment, our greatest protection against coronavirus is to slow the spread of transmission. The most reliable way to slow the spread is to limit the number of contacts between people of different households and to make those contacts safer. In addition, to protect the safety of all citizens, I beg you to put into place a requirement that people wear masks in public if they are medically able to do so, making masks optional employees in the position of having to choose between their safety and their ability to feed themselves and their families. If customers are not wearing masks, people and customer-facing jobs will be exposed to potentially hundreds of risky interactions a day, placing them and their families in great harm. Please provide the legal and political cover to allow employees this modicum of safety. As the incidence of infection is likely to increase, please do whatever is in your power to help long-term care facilities to obtain medical-grade PPE with strong protection levels. My grandmother is in an assisted living, and I am very concerned about the CNAs and other staff members will be at risk of greater exposure in their personal lives as a result of the state's current directives. Without strong protection against transmission, an asymptomatic staff member may unwittingly cause a devastating outbreak among our most vulnerable citizens and vital members of our healthcare team. Thank you very much for your time, I'm sure this is a difficult time for you, and I appreciate your service. Michelle Burkhart, 109 East Warren Street, Michigan City. So I wanted to introduce that into the record. All right, public comment is now closed, let's move on to department reports and department head comments.
Good morning, Darlene Hale, Lepore County IT, at the request of the commissioners, and actually the election board did, you know, agree to pass the voting for, to do the postcards, so I just want to give you a couple, couple updates. I know we've been instructed, Diane and I have been doing the, you know, majority of this project, but we do have teams from other departments ready to step in, you know, these are current county employees, not, not costing the county any additional funds for labor. We already had paper stock, card stock in-house, where we had discontinued in-house printing, so we didn't have to pay anything extra for any card stock, we used the current county equipment to print it. Diane has been able to work with Peter Bowe to get us a bulk rate on the postage, so I believe, and Diane, if you could back me up on that, I believe, once it's sorted, I think we get it for 26 cents a postcard. Is that correct? Yeah, 26 cents a postcard. So, you know, we are, as county employees, trying to be, you know, the most cost-effective way that we could get this accomplished, you know, without having additional funds.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and we're doing this extraordinary work, and, you know, recently, there's been a lot of response.
Sorry, there's an election in Wisconsin, and there are about 50 or 60 people contracted COVID-19. And so the purpose of doing this mailing, for those of you who are listening, is to let, let everybody know that they can exercise their right to vote without having to take personal risk to their health, that's number one. Number two, you may be healthy, but you may have a family member who has high-risk conditions, like diabetes, hypertension, somebody is recovering from cancer who is on immunosuppressive medications. You may go and vote in person and take something and give it to your family member, and it has happened. As a matter of fact, I had a guard who was at ISP, and the mother stays with him, he caught COVID-19, and his mother has COVID-19. So I see this all the time, and if we can make this safer, prevent some people from contracting this, passing it on to others, getting, going into ICU, once somebody's on a ventilator, there is a 90% chance that they are not going to make it. And so that is the reality of the situation, so I appreciate both of you working hard on getting this done to protect the lives of people in Lepore County, and thank you very much.
Again, thank you. And I would like to acknowledge there are other department heads that have made their staff readily available to us if we need help, so that we don't have to hire additional or, or contract it out.
Thank you.
Randy Novak would also like to speak under department heads.
Okay, so before you leave, Darlene, I, I really wanted to say that your summary of, of this project is such an example of an innovative team. So we, we have a problem, we have an election coming up, and we're trying to figure out how do we minimize the risk to our community? And the county team across all entities have really stepped forward and said, how can we do this? We went to the election board, we followed the process, but we've also been innovative, and I want to thank you for leading that team, it's been a remarkable and cost-saving measure, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Also, we have updated the webpage, so you would be able to just go to the report, co.in.gov, there is a button for 2020 primary election, and if you click on that, then it'll take you to your options, you've got mail-in options, or you have in-person voting also, so, and it does give all the details out there. Thank you.
Since we're gonna go ahead and do this postcard thing, it's a lot of work, I understand that. Voter registration is, is over, it's too late to register to vote, correct? Can we utilize those people to help with this project? I mean, they're, they're, they have all the information right there.
Right, and, and let me say, they have ran the reports together, the data, that we need to be able to get the addresses and, and whatnot. When we're gonna really need the help is when, once we get all the labels printed, then we'll need them to help put on, you know, on the postcards, to get, and then run it through the postage machine. But yes, we're willing to use anybody in the county, any current county employee.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Novak?
Yes, I just, on the department head, I, I just want to, item 10C that you have on your agenda today, just want to let you know that the council supports moving this Michigan City Courthouse project forward, so hopefully, when you guys get to that, you have your debate or whatever, that we continue with that, so with that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak.
Thank you.
Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a few things, right now, what's going on until May 8th, the Armory here in Lepore, they're doing testing for symptomatic patients, I thought we put the email out in the webpage, there's a hotline and an email to go to, to qualify for, so that's what's going on right now until May 8th. Second, as of May 18th, the State Department of Health in Indiana, believe Fairbanks, are gonna be doing the contact tracing, they're gonna take it away from the health departments. They want the health departments to get back to normal business, immunization, and believe it or not, some health departments aren't even doing contact tracing. So that's, that happens May 18th, it was supposed to be May 11th, but they pushed it back to May 18th, so I don't know if they're gonna take it away from our nurses or not, don't know yet, we'll find out the 18th, Jenny has not determined yet, so we don't know. And lastly, the restaurants, as you know, Governor Hope and gave them the okay to start opening up, we've been out there, we sent letters a couple weeks ago, what's required, you'll see, when you go into a restaurant now, you'll see the servers, the cooks, and all that, they should be wearing face masks, if you notice or not, contact our office, but we'll be inspecting all of them soon as they open, so, other than that, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Manco, I have a few questions, Tony. One is, are you sure that they're taking this contact tracing away from the health department, or are they going to supplement your efforts?
I, I don't know, Doc, there, there's like 500 people they fired to do this, and right now it's all over the state, so I, Jenny doesn't know if they're actually gonna take it away, because we're doing it, they might not, there's some health departments aren't even doing it.
So if we can find that out, and the reason I'm saying that, I don't want this to fall through the cracks, because our team has done a phenomenal job, I'm really proud of them, they've done a phenomenal job, Jenny and her team, so let's keep doing it. Now, if they want to take over, I want to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Right, well, they want to get back immunization, all that, they want to go back to regular functions of health department, that's what they want the nurses to do, so that's the reason why they're basically taking it away from the health departments.
And the other question I had is regarding the masks in the restaurants, is that mandatory or is it optional?
Just from the Governor Hope, Hope's recommendation to open up restaurants, there are certain criteria that, it's a long list of things that we're gonna be enforcing when, about Monday when it opens, so that's what's going on now, so we'll be inspecting all of them.
And the third question I have regarding the testing at the Armory, is it done only during the weekdays, or is it seven days a week?
It's only, it's only, I, I have to go up to May 8th, and that's it, I thought they'll be here longer than that, but it's only this week, and that's it.
Oh, this, only this week, okay.
All right, so could you repeat that direction so the public really understands that, what, what the window is, because that's, that's an interesting little tidbit, most of us...
It may fix on May 8th, which was yesterday, but what it is, is you can call, there's a hotline, we have it on the webpage, and a questionnaire that Optum has, so you can go online, and what you do is the hotline, and if you qualify for being tested, then you can go. So it's an appointment only, but you have to be symptomatic, so you go there and it's free.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you, and I know we, we had a discussion about, on our ops meeting yesterday about food trucks and other food providers, Commissioner Merzinski brought up the elephant ear person down in Huanaque who, who wants to make elephant ears, and they're, you know, they rely on these, this, as their family's income, yeah. So could we, I don't know if that's what you were gonna discuss, Shaw, but could we discuss, discuss that now and make a, make a decision?
Since the restaurants were covered under the governor's order, the, the jurisdiction though on the food trucks falls through the local department, and so I think Mr. Manco is looking for some direction from the commissioners, if you'll authorize the permitting of those food trucks, subject to social distancing and proper CDC guideline following, then, then you're, you're good to go at that point, but I think he needs something on the record.
Yeah, it's a, what we did, we suspended the license, so you hadn't seen many of those trucks around selling food, so now that the governor opened up the restaurants now down, we have to go through, say, okay, we're gonna allow you to go ahead and do this in our county now.
So your process would be to reinstate their, their license and then give them the protocol, make sure that they follow the protocol, and that would be in writing, so they would, they would agree to that in writing before you would let them open?
They'll have to, they'll have an opening inspection, wherever they are, we're gonna inspect their unit, and then we'll give them a permit to operate, and then they'll have to follow the guidelines there.
My president, I have a question, does CDC have any recommendations for food trucks?
It's more or less FDA, FDA, Food Administration, and the State Department of Health, not much from the CDC.
You know, I make a motion, my president, that as long as they are following the guidelines of the federal agency like either the CDC or an FDA, that we allow them to function.
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion, a second to allow the food trucks and other operations somewhere where mobile food, as long as they are... where mobile food, as long as they are following the directions of the La Porte County Health Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion has been approved. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Go ahead, Lynn. Go ahead.
Okay, Lynn Spieback, La Porte County Treasurer. Just want to give you an update on how our tax collection is going for the spring settlement. Last year, we had $40 million at this time, as of yesterday, May 5th. This year, we have $35 million collected, but that includes an $8 million mortgage lender file that would not have been included in last year's. So that would take us back to like $27 million collected this year compared to $40 million last year. We would have anywhere from 200 to 300 walk-ins a day. So that has drastically stopped. So the mail has been coming in heavy, and the online has been being paid, but then we're also getting phone calls with people saying, I'm going to wait until you guys are open. And then we also have the 60-day waiver from the governor of Indiana, where we go all the way to July 10th. So right now, we're like a little over half of what was collected last year, because if I include the $8 million file, that puts me not too far behind, $5 million, but it's not a true number compared to last year. So more or less, we would say $27 million collected at this time.
Madam President, so when, are some people waiting to personally come and pay?
Personally come in. We've had people that still pay with cash. They're not getting a money order, and then using the drop boxes or whatever, or mailing it in. So they're just going to wait until, once you guys set the date that we're open, they'll be lined up. We'll probably have them lined up on the sidewalk.
Socially distancing, of course.
Socially distancing, yeah. We might have to have the maintenance do some X's for us, but, yeah. So whatever, we're very pleased with the people who have mailed in, we're current with all the mailings, but it's just not enough, we're not just not even with last year.
My only suggestion is, if there's a big rush of people who want to come and pay in person, maybe work with maintenance, like you're planning to maybe have additional counters open or something that we...
Oh, we'll just keep them outside.
Outside, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just keep them outside and let one or two in at a time.
Excellent.
And they can sit in their car until they see, you know, until we wave them on, you know? Because both the Michigan City location, they park right up in front, so they can point to the next cars, say, you're next, and very easily, I could do, I add a part-time employee just to watch the door, so not more than two people come inside their cubby hole. Now here at our 555 Michigan, we can do a similar thing with only letting so many people in line inside the building and keep everybody else either in their cars or on the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Okay. Nice to hear you've already got a plan.
We do. We're already. We even got face masks.
That's great, thank you. Are there any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Anyone online?
Miss Nurse, by May, Steve Al, Director of 911. I just wanted to kind of feed off of Tony Manco, so he may not even know, I showed up this morning for the testing. This is more for the public. They're not set up yet, however, they did reschedule me for today, for 1 o'clock. And one of our members decided they'd like to be tested. I set them up online. It was very simple, if anyone wants to do it. And they're extending today out to about 8 o'clock tonight. So it was very efficient. Beginning, it's very easy, very efficient to answer the questions. Anyone in public safety can do it without being symptomatic, and it also qualifies for anyone that works for the county, or in government in general. So it was very efficient. And I just wanted to get that out there, that they are not set up right now, but they said they will be about by 1 o'clock, and they actually rescheduled me for 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank, that's very helpful. Thanks, Steve. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? All right, let's move along. Next, we have some requests, special requests. I would like to change the order of things. Let's do the proclamations after we talk about the requests from the county judges. There were judges here before, and I don't know if they're still here, but we had a request from, I believe Judge Friedman? Yeah. Judge Friedman requesting on behalf of the judges that they would like a workshop to discuss plans for reopening the county. It would need to include department heads from the Health Department, IT, Sheriff, Commission, Council, probation, Judge, clerks, prosecutor, and public defender, building maintenance, and emergency management at a minimum. Is there anyone from the judiciary that would like to speak to this at this time?
I had a chance to talk to Judge Jalavizas out in the hallway, and I think that...
This is Rick Stahlbrink, I'm on, if you'd want to hear it from me.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Judge.
The reason for, I think, we want a meeting is we're directed by the Indiana Supreme Court to file a plan with them by May 15th currently about how to reopen and restart court on a more regular basis. Obviously, it's easier to stop the train than it is to get the train going again, and the Indiana Supreme Court has directed us in an order to meet with the people that Judge Friedman has listed to try to make a plan of operation, so that we can start and resume court operations. One of our big problems is going to be jury trials, because there's, the way our courtrooms are situated, the way things are set up, it's virtually impossible to have a jury trial with any kind of social distancing. I did measurements in my courtroom. I can fit three people with a six-foot separation in my gallery, and I could fit three people with six-foot separation in my jury box. That would allow me then to have one attorney at a table, another attorney at a table, and even the attorneys, I can't get six feet away from their clients based on the table sitting, so we'd have to modify how we do everything. So we need to look for alternatives to be able to kind of restart things. Right now, the Indiana Supreme Court has issued an order that no jury trials will begin until after June 1st. We're hoping that that gets extended to at least July 4th, which is consistent in with the governor's executive order that was entered last Friday, but we don't have any word from the Indiana Supreme Court on that yet. But the long and the short of it, we need to start getting together to figure out how we're going to plan things and how we're going to get things going again. And that, that's going to involve all of those key players to be able to do that.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Shaw, did you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I had a chance to chat with Judge Jalavizas in the hallway. He concurs with Judge Stahlbrink, they're under direction by the Supreme Court to pull off a meeting with key department heads and the commissioners. If you could do something, and even suggest it next Wednesday, if that might work for the commission, so that you could get department heads, and that's part of your overall reopening plan anyway. So that would be helpful, if you all could schedule something.
All right. So we probably need to check some calendars, but why don't we have a motion, and then we'll set the date after, once they've checked calendars?
I make a motion, Madam President, that we'll have a workshop set up for next Wednesday with the judges and the, and the other department heads to help put together a plan for a phase reopen.
And I suggested as well, you perhaps have someone from the, one or two members, at least, from the PPE committee there as well, since PPE is going to be part of that project along with installing of the plastic...
And also some council members.
Yes, that's right. Got a council members, maintenance, of course, because of the installation of the sneeze guards. I think they've got some, a plan for the next couple of weeks, and so, you know, a little more broader base, and hopefully you get all the, all the folks at the table you need.
I second your motion.
Judge Stahlbrink, if I can just interject, all courts have been operating virtually. I had five Zoom hearings yesterday. The day before, I had four. The issue is going to be when we bring people back in the building instead of doing it virtually by video. So all of our courts have been operating, we've been doing it by video. The question becomes, how do we do the social distancing? And that's what we're going to need the assistance from everybody's input from. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to set a meeting for next Wednesday. We're, depending on your schedule, perhaps 10:00 AM or something? Okay, all right. We'll suggest 10:00 AM next Wednesday, and everyone will check their schedules. Do we have a second on that?
I do.
Oh, okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on then, that request has been granted. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Correctional Officers Week, which is this week, May 3rd through the 9th. Would someone like to read that into the record?
I think Sheriff Boyd is coming up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll actually ask that you read it, and then I've got a statement after that.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, please, go ahead, Dr. Crone.
Yeah, this is a proclamation to all, to whom this presence may come greetings, whereas correctional officers across the United States are run by highly qualified and experienced individuals with a deep understanding of the challenges within the profession, and whereas correctional officers and employees are resourceful, capable, committed, patient, and persistent professionals in criminal justice in our nation, and whereas correctional officers and employees serve admirably in many different capacities, including jail administrators, wardens, chaplains, nurses, supervisors, social workers, teachers, managers, and directors. And whereas the career of correctional officers and employees is often very challenging and stressful, the dedicated individuals who work in the La Porte County Jail every day perform their duties well with great pride, and whereas the La Porte County Jail correctional officers and employees are brave, courageous, tenacious individuals who put their lives and health at risk every day to keep the public safe and service honorable profession nobly and admirably, therefore, we, the commissioners of La Porte County, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, 2020, as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in the county of La Porte, and invite all citizens to duty no dislocation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Crone.
Thank you so much. We're here because of 1984, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed the second week of May as National Correctional, National Correctional Officers Week. I'm here today with Captain Allott, who's our jail commander, and Jeanne Crossland, who's our administrative coordinator. Chief Deputy Ron Heig is here as well. Our jail staff that we would like to have here is so busy in the jail that they're not actually able to be here, but nonetheless, we would like to recognize them as we advance towards next week. National Correctional Officers Week recognizes those individuals who take on the difficult task of working in the field of corrections. Perhaps no law enforcement entity is more underappreciated than the correctional officer. The value that correctional officers staff play in public service is largely unknown to the public that they serve. The public often don't show their, often do show their support for law enforcement, but the correctional officer is often forgotten about or simply left out of the conversation. Those who work in corrections often find themselves in a very thankless job. Our deputies decide, that are assigned to our jail division, walk into our facility where others simply drive by and stare and wonder what life is like inside. They witness firsthand things that most people only see on TV, and those that, who witness them, would rather forget. Our jail deputies support, and treatment staff put themselves in harm's way to advance the mission of protecting the public. Staff and inmates while at the same time helping offenders to change their behavior to become better human beings. The task of returning individuals back to their communities better than when they left becomes more challenging as departments are tasked with doing more with less. Under normal circumstances, it's difficult, stressful, and at many times dangerous profession. And because correctional personnel work behind secured walls outside of the public view, they are many times not recognized as part of our nation's first responders, but truly they are. And now, like any other first responders, they have the monumental task of dealing with a silent and invisible deadly virus under conditions where social distancing becomes at least difficult and for the most part, impossible. The guidelines and procedures they are now entrusted to execute to help control this part of COVID-19 is an ever-changing and unprecedented challenge to a degree that they've never dealt with before. And we owe them a debt of gratitude for doing so, considering the health risks that they are exposed to every day. Approximately 21 correctional officers across the country have lost their lives so far to COVID-19. As we celebrate National Correctional Officers Week next week, we ask that you remember that each day, our jail deputies enforce laws within our facility. Each day, our jail deputies armed with little more than pepper spray, maybe a taser, are locked in with some violent criminals, people that the public are very fearful of. Every day, our jail officers offer aid, assistance, and directions to those who are unable to help themselves. Each day, they place themselves in danger to protect individuals that society has discarded. They do this while treating those that they protect with dignity and respect, and oftentimes, they don't have that same treatment reciprocated. They do this while being outnumbered, sometimes 30 or 40 to 1. Often, our jail deputies are called upon to work extra shifts, double shifts, and as a result, they miss out on family events that they have to later explain to their children why they missed another game, a recital, a parent-teacher conference, because they had to work. It's crucial during the National Correctional Officers Week that we remember the importance of the missions and the danger associated with their job. The nature of their job protects our community by limiting the movement of those who have harmed them. In what seems to be an even more difficult task, our jail deputies send incarcerated people back into the community better than what they were when they arrived in the jail. I would reason that no one in law enforcement community does more to ensure our communities live without fear. During these uncertain times, our correctional employees come to work eager and enthusiastic about their jobs. Our absentee rate is as low as it's ever been, and our employees are more focused and more serious about the mission of their job than they ever have been before. They come into work not knowing what dangers that they may face and the risks that they will be exposed to. In addition, they don't know if they, in turn, will expose their families to the same hazards when they return at the end of their shift. Each one of our correctional employees has a family or a significant other who are facing these same unknowns and making similar sacrifices to support their loved ones. They too are heroic and would be remiss if we didn't recognize and thank our families. The public looks to our correctional officers for safety and protection, and this is a monumental task. It's a task that they are proud of, that they readily accept, and one that is vitally important to our county. What they do is important, and it matters, and it takes a special person to do what they do. And I'd like to thank each and one, every one of our correctional staff and our support staff at the La Porte County Jail. Captain Allott?
Just real briefly, I think the sheriff, your words are spot on, and I gotta tell you, I appreciate working with you and working with men and women that are working in our jail. This is no question, the entire meeting thus far has been talking about the pandemic that we're currently dealing with. Our dinner tables at night are those same conversations. So nonetheless, challenges are what we are facing. So just real brief, the challenges are very apparent in the jail, and when we are challenged, it brings out our character. And I will tell you, I have firsthand knowledge of these people, men and women that are working back in our facility, their character has been remarkable, and I am very proud to have represented them and worked for them and worked with them and worked for this office. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do. Thank you, Jeanne, also. And I've worked with Jeanne through the, for the health aspects of the correctional system, and you have been phenomenal. All your staff has been wonderful to work with.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I think you nailed it when you talked about the character of people. So trying times brings out a person's sinew, and you, your words were spot on, Sheriff, in just talking about how in desperate times, you really see what people are made of. And I, we can't express enough how much we appreciate the work. Please relay that back to the team, because they, I understand when you talk about them being underappreciated. Most people, you know, out of sight, out of mind, they just don't think about it, and they're actually keeping our families all across La Porte County safe every single night. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation for Emergency Management Services Week.
Mr. McGuire is here.
Mr. McGuire, would you like to read this into the record, please?
I'm not sure, was there a motion made to approve the resolution?
I'm so moved.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Thank you, Shaw, to approve the proclamation for Correctional Officers Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Let's go on to EMS Week.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to show our appreciation to Sheriff Boyd and Captain Allott for all
the correctional employees here in LaPorte County especially. So our annual EMS Week is May 17 through May 23. As unusual and different as this year is going to be, it's also a bit more meaningful to us this year. Looking back over the past few months and what our employees have been, been through and having to deal with, I feel now more than ever, they deserve our appreciation and thanks for what they're doing. I still think there's a huge misunderstanding within the community outside of healthcare workers, especially as to what we do and the medical training that our employees actually possess. They kind of look at us, and we joke around about it from time to time, but they look at us as being a modified Uber driver, maybe taking people to the house, or ambulance drivers we've been called before. But obviously, we all know that our employees are much more than that. So I'd like to take this opportunity to say a heartfelt thank you to the highly-trained, dedicated, and professional group of EMTs, paramedics, and office professionals that make up LaPorte County EMS. This year, we're not able to hold our annual awards ceremony as we normally do and not host some of our gatherings that we normally do, but we still are going to find a way to show our appreciation to our employees the best we can. So with that being said, I would ask your consideration of proclaiming the week of May 17 through the 23rd as EMS Week.
Madam President, before we adopt this, let me read this into the record, if it's okay with you.
Thank you.
Whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, and whereas members of the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, whereas emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival rate and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, whereas emergency medical service providers have traditionally served as the safety net for America's healthcare system, and whereas LaPorte County Emergency Medical Services Team consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas members of the LaPorte County Emergency Medical Services Team, whether as a carrier or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas LaPorte County residents benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of our LaPorte County Emergency Medical Service Provider by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, and now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the County of LaPorte, State of Indiana, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through 23rd, 2020, as the Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Madam President, I work with this group of dedicated individuals on a regular basis in my other job, and I cannot thank you enough for all you do, especially during this COVID crisis, you have been on the front lines, you're risking your health and your life to take care of everyone. So thank you very much from myself, my fellow commissioners, and everybody in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Well said.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do you have any, any comment? I didn't mean to cut you off.
I think we hit it about on the head. Their job is stressful enough all the time, and it just made it 10 times worse now, and they do a heck of a job. There's great people there.
Please make sure that you bring our best wishes and congratulations and thank you, gratitude from everyone in LaPorte County and the Commissioners.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution for National Nurses Week. Dr. Cora?
Madam President, you know, this morning I was driving to the hospital, and then I saw Mr. Mazzoni and Ms. Trish Weber and a bunch of individuals who were greeting nurses as they were coming into the hospital, and it was such a great, I wish I had stopped by and had taken a picture. It was really wonderful. And especially during this COVID crisis, now we physicians, we go into the room, we spend a little time, we get out, and the nurses are there all the time, taking care of them. And I just want to emphasize this because when Prime Minister Boris Johnson got sick, and he was hospitalized, and he admitted, you know, he didn't take this seriously, but then after he got sick, and then he knocked death's door, and then he came back, well, thank God for that, then he realized how serious this is, and he thanked the entire healthcare team, but he really thanked the two nurses who took care of him for those two, three days when he was really critical and he wasn't sure whether he was going to make it or not. And if I'm not mistaken, he named one of his children after either one of the nurses or physicians who took care of him. So it was really a very interesting story. And I work with the nurses, whether it's in our county health department, it's in the hospitals, both the hospitals, nursing homes, the home healthcare nurses, clinics, they do a phenomenal job. So with your permission, I'd like to read this resolution, Madam President.
Certainly, thank you.
Whereas beginning in 1991, National Nurses Week is celebrated annually from May 6, also known as the National Recognition Day for nurses, through May 12, the birthday of Florence Nightingale, the founder of modern nursing. Whereas National Nurses Week is a time of year to reflect on the important contributions that nurses make to provide safe, high-quality healthcare, whereas nurses present the largest single component of healthcare professions with an estimated 4 million registered nurses in the United States. Whereas nurses are the cornerstone of the public health infrastructure, promoting healthy lifestyles and educating communities on disease prevention and health promotion. Whereas nursing has been voted the most honest and ethical profession in the United States for 17 years in a row, and whereas nurses play a key role in the front lines of the battle against COVID-19 epidemic, and they have honorably served, often placing themselves at great risk and peril during the difficult time. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of LaPorte County, Indiana, honor our nurses with this resolution recognizing National Nurses Week, and we recognize the significant contribution that nurses make to the healthcare system in LaPorte County, Indiana, and we encourage residents to observe National Nurses Week to demonstrate the importance that nurses play in our everyday lives. All of which is resolved on the 6th day of May 2020. I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second motion.
We have a motion in a second. And before we take the vote, I, I can't emphasize more what you said. You know, I have been on the receiving end of the nurses' healthcare. I, I am the sister of a nurse, I'm the mother of a nurse, I'm the auntie of a nurse, but when you are in trouble in healthcare, the doctors are great, but they come and they go, and it's those nurses who provide you the, you know, just the confidence to get better, to know that you're going to, you're going to heal, and they, they really do an unbelievable job. So I think anyone who's ever been ill, the person that they think about is always the nurse. So with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Cora. Next on the agenda, we have old business. Let's review the proposed amended LaPorte County COVID-19 Employee and Operations Policy to comply with the Governor's May 1, 2020 Executive Order provided for phased reopening. Shaw, do you want to talk?
Yes, Commissioners have worked with Ms. Mossman and the HR Department on a amended policy that would have us consistent with the Governor's order on May 1, as he implemented the back-on-track Indiana, the five-stage roadmap to strategically open businesses, lift nonessential travel, and increase social gathering numbers. Under this draft, the, still, the public health emergency would be in place, but it would direct elected officials and county department heads to continue with their plan to allow central county offices and departments to remain staffed and operational under the following guidance. Allow county employees, as determined by their supervisor department head, to continue to work remotely if needed through and including May 22. Those working remotely should continue using the time sheets provided to record time worked remotely. Secondly, county departments shall begin to return employees to the office and continue operating by utilizing a rotational schedule if needed during working hours to keep individual departments operational through and including May 22. The third, county employees required to utilize personal protective equipment when interacting with members of the public. Continue to practice social distancing of six feet until further notice. Under this revised order, all county buildings shall be closed to the public through and including May 22. Of course, with courthouses, as you've had with the existing policies, security is monitoring at the door, so the courthouse to inquire members of the public as to whether they are presenting at the door for essential business, including any court hearings. This then leads into your workshop that you're going to be handling next week to start with the back-to-work and back-to-full operation plan requested by the judges and other department heads, but this at least keeps the, keeps a policy in place up to and including May, May 22.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep.
Ms. Mossman?
Good morning. No, I don't have anything at this time. Everything that Shaw addressed is what we feel needs to be put in place at this time for the county till we can get all our personal protection equipment in place for each department to adequately serve the public.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Do you need a motion?
We need a, do we have a motion? Yes?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proposed amended LaPorte County COVID-19 Employee and Operations Plan to comply with the Governor's order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Next on the agenda is an update on the Commissioners' request to County Election Board. We discussed this previously, but there may be a few other items for mailing, providing options for voters on mail-in and early voting.
Madam President, I think Ms. Hale had started this conversation during our department head comments. So we had requested, we had adopted, we passed a motion here asking, sending in applications for ballots, but they felt that it was difficult to do it and it was too costly, but the election board decided to do these cards, and they adopted that. And so, thanks to the efforts of Ms. Hale and Ms. Gonzalez and several other members of our LaPorte County staff, we have been able to pull this off. We have been sending those cards, and basically, the cards will let them know that in, during this pandemic that we are dealing with, if somebody is scared to go and vote in person, they have an option. And how to exercise that option and their right to vote, and they have three ways of getting that application. One is if they have a computer and a printer, they can go and print the application, and they can sign it and send it to the clerk's office. If they don't have a computer and a printer, and by the way, I learned this the hard way because over the last month and a half, I have been doing a lot of telemedicine, and I realized how many elderly people do not have a computer and a printer, and how many of them do not have a smartphone. And I learned it the hard way. And so I learned, so the second option is that if they have a smartphone, they can go to indiana voters dot com, and they can, there's a fillable form right there. They can fill it, and they can submit it, and then it comes back to the county clerk's office, and then they'll get the application. And if they don't have a computer, if they don't have a smartphone, all they have is a landline, there's a way, they can just pick up the phone, they can call the clerk's office and request the application, and if they fill the application and send it in, then they'll get the ballot, and then they'll be able to fill the ballot and send it in. Now, for those who want to mail in, vote in person, then there is an early voting, and there is election day voting. All that information is on the county website right now. And what we are doing by sending these cards is to let people know that during this pandemic, there are different ways of exercising their right to vote, and if they're afraid of voting in person, there are options. That's all this does matter. And then, yes, there is a cost associated with this, but how do you justify not protecting people and allowing them to get sick and then spending hundreds and thousands of dollars on their healthcare? It doesn't make sense morally, it doesn't make sense financially. That's how I feel about it.
Madam President, if I could too, the, just for the record, the County Election Board last Friday, on a bipartisan vote of two to one, authorized this postcard mailing. I think the original estimates were 30,000 total, 15,000 postage, 15,000 printing. Because of the efforts Darlene and Diane and others, I think that cost is going to come down because it's being done in-house, and there's some in-house printing, but we've been assured by the auditor, there is plenty there in the current budget to provide for this particular mailing cost, and I'll have her reinforce that on the record. But as far as we know, there is, there are certainly resources there to help underwrite this particular mailing.
Right. And Madam President, I also indicated to our county clerk, both through emails and personal conversation, that once these cards go in, if there are a lot of requests for ballots, then if she needs additional staff to handle those requests, to make sure that she approaches us, the council, make sure that we provide her the resources to take care of what she needs to do by law, that whoever sends in the application, that they be sent in a ballot in a timely manner.
And Dr. Cora, that's an important point to make. I mean, because with this mailing, there's expected to be a significant flow of absentee ballot applications, and so the clerk is required under law to be able to process those and get them out in a timely fashion, and if she needs additional staffing, certainly to request that. And to my understanding, there is money certainly in that budget to allow for part-time hires, but that's part of the statutory duty to process those as soon as they come in and do so in a timely fashion.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned the statute, because when I listened to the election board meeting on ALCO, I have to say, I heard her concern about being able to process things. So it is up to the clerk to come to us and say, this is what we need. We do have some staff in other departments that may be available, so it could be a, you know, a moot point as far as finances, but we need to know what's needed, and we need to be able to anticipate and find out what the plan is, because certainly, it would be wonderful if people were able to vote by absentee so that they can exercise their right to vote, which is an American privilege and right, and we certainly want to encourage people to not be afraid to vote because of COVID-19, not be concerned, because, you know, Dr. Cora mentioned Wisconsin, there were people who got the virus from exercising their right to vote, and we want to make sure that it's safe, easily accessible, and something that people are encouraged to do without distress, so.
And Madam President, I also want to emphasize the poll workers, because a lot of the poll workers are elderly, and they are at a higher risk, and many of them are my patients. I deeply care about them, and I want to make sure they protect them also.
Yes, absolutely.
Right.
Do we need a motion, Shaw? What'd you say?
If you would, simply going on record, again, authorizing and directing the clerk to provide and obtain any additional staffing necessary to process the absentee ballot application.
Okay.
Darlene? Just real quick, a comment on that note. I know that my staff and myself are ready to provide extra equipment, you know, PCs and possibly phone lines if we need to, to be able to help the clerk with this process. Early voting is going to be in a quarter of this room. We could actually set that up early with the help of maintenance and, you know, put the equipment in here now so that she could exercise and get additional staff if needed. All she has to do is request.
Right.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we continue with the process of getting these cards out and also request the county clerk, Ms. Crowback, to let us know in case if she needs additional resources to help make sure that every person who has sent in this application gets a ballot in a timely fashion.
Thank you.
Before I, before I second the motion, I wanted to state that when this idea first came up, I sent an email to all of you, and I questioned it. I said, you know, we've got the Herald/Argus, and News Dispatch, ALCO, WCOE, WIMS, WFM, Facebook websites. If people don't know how they can vote, but I didn't realize, not very many people take the News Dispatch or the Herald/Argus, or watch ALCO, or any of these radio stations, they wouldn't get that. And there was rumors going around, because we get a lot of calls at the office saying that we can only vote by mail now. Now, that was the rumor that was going around, which of course was.
So this clarifies everything, you know, that there's in-person voting, there's mail voting, and I think that'll be helpful.
Kind of got out of hand. So I'll second the motion, and but I want to remind us all that you made a good point with poll workers to make sure, I don't know if they've got them all lined up yet, but that's going to be a concern, but the real concern that I've had a lot of calls on is the traveling board. We have an issue there that we need to figure out, so.
We may have difficulty this year in traveling board because, you know, when it comes to assisted living facilities and nursing homes, they are not allowing anybody to go in, and they should not, because there is such risk involved in allowing people to go in, and I feel that maybe sending these applications in and having them fill the mail-in ballot may be the best way out, because I don't think the nursing homes, they will let people in.
That's, that's part of the problem.
Yeah.
Agreed. And I think, let's be clear too, Secretary of State, County Lawson, could not have been clearer about the emphasis on mail-voting this particular science. So I think you're doing that consistent with direction from our Secretary of State.
And the state has done a good job of giving the option, and I appreciate that, yeah.
So.
I second the motion.
We have a motion in a second to support the County Election Board in mailing through our personnel support, and also to ask that the county clerk come back to us with a request for any support she needs to make sure that we execute, and this is a big success. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Madam President, related to this, I would like to make one other suggestion, because this is an extraordinary circumstance, and so many of these requests will be coming in, probably it would be a good idea for the election board to meet on a weekly basis between now and the election day, that way they can oversee this and then commute and work with county clerk and us to make sure this whole process goes smooth. sure this whole process goes smoothly without any last-minute chaos. And I think it's important that we do that. So I make a motion requesting the election board to meet on a weekly basis between now and June 2nd.
I would second that motion and I agree. There's, there's a lot of things that need to get settled and the traveling board is one of them. I talked to both of the county chairs, both political parties. They're both very concerned about what are we going to do? The nursing home won't let our people in? We're just going to go up there and trust that they're going to, I mean, let's face it. If I'm working at the nursing home and you brought me in 20 ballots, I can go knock them all and sign somebody's name and send them out. We need to make sure of what we're doing, but we want to make sure that those people have a right to vote because there's a lot of them do.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to ask the county election board to meet weekly, to plan the protocol and strategies for all of our election issues. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consider updated funds, a report and anticipated revenue estimates provided by the financial advisor Carl Sander and auditor Joey Winzke as a prerequisite to possible restart of the Michigan City Courthouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the commission, glad to be here this afternoon. Just as much of the meeting has been focused today on the health and safety of the residents in La Porte County, we're also concerned about our financial condition of the county. And so you've asked that I do some fund projections of the general fund, just to give you kind of a range of where are we at, as well as some of the other major funds. Today, I'm just presenting on the general fund. Some additional work needs to be done to compile accurate information on the other funds. So in your packet that I've handed out to you, I've put together three scenarios. The first one's kind of an optimistic outlook, kind of assuming that unemployment doesn't exceed 10% by the end of this year. Scenario two is kind of middle-of-the-road outlook with unemployment of 15% or less by the end of this year. And scenario three is a more pessimistic outlook with an unemployment of 20% or less. Hopefully, we don't get to the scenarios two or three, but wanted to present it for your consideration. Just quickly, I'll go through some of the major assumptions we used in our projections. Scenario one, property tax collections were assumed at 95%, so a 5% uncollection rate for 2020 through 2023. We have updated circuit breaker credits from the tax caps that the Department of Local Government Finance just recently released at the end of April are now included. The local income tax and certified share projections, we reduced those income estimates by 5% for 2021, 10% in 2022 and '23. There's always a lag because the state is based on their fiscal year when they compile the income estimates and tax estimates. So we don't think it's really going to hit really majorly until 2022. Some of the other miscellaneous taxes we reduced by 5%. We assume expenditures modest increases of 2.5% in '21, 2.2 in '22, and 2% in '23. Scenario two, the middle-of-the-road, we assumed property tax collections had 95% in 2020, 90% in 2022 and 2023, so more at 10% uncollectible rates. Income tax revenues from certified shares, again, reduced by 5% in '21, but a 15% reduction in '22 and '23. And the rest of the assumptions are pretty much the same. In scenario three, the more pessimistic outlook, we assume property tax collections of 95% for this year, 85% in '22 and '23. Local income tax certified shares reduced 5% of our income tax receipts for '21 and 20% in '22 and '23. All three of these scenarios also assume that you would proceed with your Michigan City Courthouse renovation project based on Baker Tilly's estimates of debt service. Those are included in these cash flow projections. At the end of 2019, the general fund had a balance of 12.2 million. And so based on the projections that are enclosed, pages one through six for your review, I'm not going to really spend time going through them in detail. But scenario one shows by the end of '23, we would have a deficit position of almost $350,000 balance, so going from 12.2 to a $350,000 deficit. Scenario two, we would end up with about a 5.8 deficit at the end of '23. And scenario three, the worst, more pessimistic case, about a 10.7% deficit. Now, a good part of that, I shouldn't say a good part, but a significant part is timing of property taxes. So if taxpayers are unemployed or are not able to meet their property tax collections because they're making decisions about putting food on the table, they're not going to be able to pay timely. And so there's probably going to be a delay in taxes, not that they would never pay those taxes. As we all know now, the governor's order has extended the due date of paying real estate and personal property taxes until July 10th. But a lot of it's going to depend, what's the economy going to be like in the next three years? So once, if hopefully things start to improve again and the stay-at-home orders work and the cases start shrinking and, and the governor is able to allow folks to return back to work more, that over time, and it may take two, three, four years till, you know, people can fully pay their taxes. Hopefully, they pay them on time, but we've got to be prepared that that may not be the case. And so that's really a timing issue. So at some point, those funds will start coming back in and will replenish the county's So the emergency reserve fund presently has 10.2 million balance in it. And I understand there's a proposal between both at the commissioners and at the council to use $3.5 million of total county funds for the courthouse project. 2 million would come out of the emergency reserve fund and 1.5 million out of major moves. Major moves, I understand, has about 7.1 million of cash. So both funds have available funds for this. So if the council and the commission, if you're both towards, move forward with this project and 2.5 million is, I'm sorry, 2 million is used for the emergency reserve fund, that would leave approximately 8.2 to also be available over these next three to four years, which I feel strongly that you need to have these reserves. Just like now, I believe Auditor Winzke has indicated that by end of May, we're going to be significantly depleted until property tax revenues come in. And so we may need to have these emergency reserve funds, or you may want to call them rainy day funds, in order to keep county operations moving along. So I believe if the commission and the council move forward with this, that 8.2 should be adequate if we're in the scenario one, the scenario two range. If things get worse, and we probably should constantly look at these projections throughout the next several years, just to see if we're keeping on track. Again, my crystal ball may not be as clear. We're all, this is a new situation for all of us. And so we're still learning what this is going to do for the financial impact. The one bit of good news that we did receive is recently, the state auditor has announced that they're going to be submitting supplemental income tax distributions to all taxing entities. La Porte County share would be, for its certified shares, would be 346,000, and for economic development distribution, approximately 439. We may want to tuck those monies away in our rainy day or emergency reserve fund when we do receive those funds. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on these projections.
Madam President, I have a few questions.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you for making, taking the time to make these projections. When we put a pause on the Michigan City Courthouse project, we were really concerned with what was happening. We were in the initial phase of the COVID-19 crisis and everything was falling apart. And so we wanted to just take a pause to see where things were. So this helps us, guide us through this crisis. So what you're saying is that even in the worst-case scenario, that will be, we'll have a projected cash deficit of 10.698.
Correct.
That's the worst-case scenario. And then, but we have 8 million in reserves.
Correct.
So the net effect will be about 2.7. Two-point, or the net, okay. So I think that that's the number I was looking for. And so I appreciate you doing that. The second thing I wanted to ask you was, I know there is, there are some talks in Congress about doing some, like a fourth stimulus bill to help the states and the local governments. But if, let's say that is not done yet in what has already been passed in one, two, three, is there any, are we expecting any money out of that to the local government?
I don't believe out of what's been currently passed, there's any money designated for local units of government at this time.
Okay.
So it would have to be for, and there is talk for additional funding for, for state and local units of government coming down the pipe.
And the other thing I wanted to say, Madam President, is that if we do decide to move forward with this, I think we should definitely continue to press our elected representatives, both in the House and the Senate, to make sure they come together in a bipartisan manner and pass this fourth bill that will help the states as well as the local governments. And that way, we can continue to run the operations and we can, and without going into a cash deficit. So I think that that's something we need to let everybody know, that it's something we need to pursue and, and continue to lobby on behalf of our county government.
Okay. Mr. Morzinski?
Yeah, when this first came up, this has been, geez, let's see, I'm the commissioner for my fourth year, two years recess and eight years on the council. I was still on the council when we talked about this because what had happened, we had a fire at the Michigan City Court, an electrical fire. And that's when the inspector over there says, if you don't do something, you're going to come in here on some Monday morning and I'm going to lock the doors and I'm going to keep you, keep you from going in this building. That's when we decided, well, okay, we're going to have to do something. We looked at just fixing the electric. We even looked at getting another building just for the courts and selling that building. But now we've come to this point, we have already spent a lot of money with Structure Point and some other, some other vendors here. We're already into this, pretty, pretty deep. So I would hate to see that we just stop completely because we've already spent a lot of money on it. And we're going to do that whether we continue or not. We already spent it. But I'd say that there are a lot of things to consider. If we're, if we're going to do this project, personally, I think we need to see the bids so that we know exactly what we're looking at. You know, the bids might come in higher, they might come in lower, I don't know. I wonder what it's going to be. Now that we've delayed it, you know, the union contract's coming up June 1st. And the other side of it is, well, there's people that are out of work, they'd really like to get back to work. I don't know how much of that's going to be a factor, but we've already got money spent. We're already into this project. We know we have to do something. Personally, I think if we put out the bids today, it's going to be 30 days at least before we get the bids back. Most of those bids are going to be good for 60 to 90 days. We're looking right now at funding for working through two winters, which is going to add the price even more. So personally, if we're going to do this, I think we should at least get the bids so we know what we're looking at.
Madam President, if I could add too, from the attorney's standpoint, the pause that you did gave you the opportunity to work collaboratively with the council to revise this plan. The original plan that both sides, both the commission and council had agreed on was to use a significantly higher percentage of the emergency reserve fund. The work, and we got to compliment the council as well, because they've engaged in this collaborative process over the last month to come up with a consensus plan. But that month pause allowed you to do that, allowed you to get a good handle on the finances, to get sign-off by both the financial advisor and the auditor on a revised plan. And under this plan, financial advisors on board, the auditors on board, it allows you to keep over 8 million in emergency reserve, which was not the case previously. As Carl has indicated, it provides for a $3.5 million down payment on the project consisting of 2 million from emergency reserve and a million and a half for major moves. Annual debt service, as you saw, the Baker Tilly report is under, is approximately 1.3 million a year, which is very manageable, under our certified shares, the CAGIT that we received. So I think it's an improved plan that hopefully both the commission and council can live with. If you authorize a restart today, we can direct town and block to go out and get the bids that Mr. Morzinski is talking about. I mean, if there is some indication that if anything, because of how much, how much hungry these subcontractors are, we may get a better price on some of these things at this point. So that's the indication we're getting from some of the construction folks. But you authorize it today, we can restart the financing process and the bid process immediately.
Well, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Friedman. This was a business decision to make the pause so that we, we knew, you know, it's a huge chunk of, of debt for our county to go forward. And in order to do so, we needed to be confident that we had all of our facts. So, Mr. Sander, you know, that, your piece was an important piece, talking to our contractors, talking to our auditor, making sure that we had a really good handle on all of the unknowns and the knowns. And I think that's what's important. Before we proceed with the vote, I'd really love to hear from Auditor Winzke. And I know that Councilman Novak had a few comments. I don't know if he wants to add anything, but if, Joey, if you could make a few comments, I think that that would be really important to hear.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Carl's financial opinion. And I would add that you all heard Treasurer Spivak speak previously on the collections and we're past the halfway mark right now. So I think that Mr. Sander's projection is, is at the low end. And I think that at least for the first half of our year, we're going to be fine. I noticed on the projection sheet that he projected a deficit balance as of September. I don't think that we'll be that much, I don't think we'll be at any deficit. I think our deficit will come in probably the first part of November or maybe later. But having said that, we have our, our first settlement that will be performed on May 19th. So we'll have a better understanding then of how much we're going to see in tax collection for the county. The, the second tax collection on July 11th, that ends July 11th, Kristi and I are planning on doing a second settlement. And it really won't be a settlement, but it'll be called an advanced draw settlement. And so that taxing units in the county do not lose that additional income due to the governor's mandate to or extension of the tax collection. I really feel pretty secure in saying all this and I'm, I'm really hoping for the best scenario. I agree with Mr. Sander that we could see a reduction next year and the year after in the CAGIT, CEDIT, local roads and streets, MVH, several of those tax-based funds. We will probably see some, some sort of deficit in that. I'm really hoping that there's a vaccine by the end of the year so that this can be put behind us. That's what I'm really hoping and praying for. I see doctors shaking his head. I think that'll really help us. But I feel very comfortable moving ahead- But I, I feel very comfortable moving ahead based on these projections, based on my own projections, and based on the fact that we do have an emergency reserve fund that we can go back to. We have several other funds that we could probably tap into if we have to. We're one of the few 92 counties in the state of Indiana that really watch what we spend. We, thanks to the, the council and their efforts during the past probably 12 years, we have saved, we have ensured that, that we're gonna be able to move forward with our emergency reserve or rainy day fund. And I give the council a lot of credit for that. Working with them the past eight years, we have reduced budgets. Our budgets have not increased significantly. In the, in fact, they've increased less than 5% over the last eight years. So, you know, I, I really feel that this project is very much needed. And if you've ever been over to the courthouse, you know, Commissioner Rosenbaum mentioned that we had a fire there. And just two years ago, we had another fire. It was a small fire, but every fire takes a little bit more out of that building. So we, we really need to, and, and let me also say this. I've had a lot of comments from a lot of people asking why we just don't close that building. If, most of you will remember, when we began this project, we did ask our state representatives to see if we could do that, if we could close that and move everything to LaPorte. And we can't. It's in the Constitution of the United States, or not the United States, the state of Indiana, that we have a superior courthouse in Michigan City, and we can't change it. So having said that, we, we need to move forward. And I would very much welcome your positive vote on this. I worked, as all of you know, I worked for over five long years on this. And I wouldn't have done it had I thought that we wouldn't, that it would not be necessary. It is necessary. So having, and, and it will not cost, well, I shouldn't say it that way. It will not raise the tax rates for any taxpayer in the, in the county. So I think that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you, Joey. Needless to say, Joey and I have worked together for, may I say, decades. And I do consider her counsel really, really important. She has spearheaded this project and left no stone unturned to make sure that it was done well. So please know that we did not intend in any way to send a message that this wasn't an important project, this wasn't a necessary project, and in fact, a required project. It was a pause to make sure that we could build the business case and understand the finances with all the unknowns and the uncertainties back in March. Would we be able to define at least a pathway forward that made good fiscal sense for every county taxpayer? And I think your assurance and Mr. Sander's assurance and Baker Tilly's assurance, our county attorney's assurance, the county council's assurance, we are all, I think we're in unison that we have a good, we don't know all of the variables exactly, but we have a good pathway forward that makes good financial sense. So Mr. Rosenbaum is on, I know Mr. Novak is on. Do you have any comments or questions or concerns?
Yes, I, I would like to also commend the auditor for all the work. I know she's, of everybody that worked on this project, she's worked the hardest on it. So kudos to her. And kudos, you don't hear this much, and I know we have sometimes, to the commissioners for the pause, the council does not have an issue with the pause. And we've been able to restructure it. So kudos to the commissioners for taking the pause and hopefully that we'll move this ahead forward, will put a lot of people to work and get this very needed project moving forward. So thank you to everybody who was involved. And I agree too with Carl's numbers and, and that, but I agree with Joey that I think, I think we're gonna be in a lot better shape than we thought. So thank you.
Mr. Rosenbaum, did you have something to say, Councilman Rosenbaum? Okay, I, all right.
Madam President, yeah. So there's no question, this is a needed project. All we did was put a pause when we were overwhelmed with financial debt that was hitting us in March. But Mr. Sander's report, looking at the three scenarios, even in the worst possible scenarios, we will be able to handle our debt service. I think that is, to put it in a simple word, in the worst possible scenario, can we handle the debt service? I feel comfortable that yes, we can handle the debt service. And plus, I think the way this has been structured, thanks to Council President Mr. Novak and the rest of the council members, that using 1.5 out of major moves, 2 out of reserves, that will still leave 8 million dollars in reserves. So in case we have shortfalls that we can, we can tap into. So I feel comfortable. And Madam President, I make, I also want to thank the auditor who has done a phenomenal job and worked hard on all this. And also Treasurer for coming up and giving her report that the property taxes are coming through. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, we remove the pause and we move forward with the Michigan City Courthouse project with a down payment of $3.5 million, 2 million coming from the reserves, 1.5 million coming from major moves. And one other thing I wanted to ask, add, Madam President, is you approached NERPC recently to see if there was any money for shovel-ready projects. In my motion, I would also like to mention that in case we are able to tap into some of that money, we will use that to reduce our bond, bond debt. With that, I make a motion.
A long motion. I'll second it.
We have a long motion and a second to move the courthouse project off of the pause mode and back into operational mode. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. Let's move on to new business. Is it time for lunch yet? All right. New business, consider an MOU with the city of LaPorte for local matching funds for economic development corridor. Mitch Bishop. I don't know if Mitch is on.
Good morning.
There you are.
Good morning. Or rather, good afternoon.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's afternoon. Good afternoon, Mitch.
Last meeting I brought up at the county was, we won a grant for 256,000. And that, that grant, at that time, we signed a contract with Locknewza Group to perform design services for a phase of the economic development corridor between US 35 and State 4. In that grant, there was a 20% requirement. And the MOU in front of you signifies that the city of LaPorte will cover the grant amount, which is 66,000, and not our county council. And we need to signature the president, shoot, Matthias.
Madam President, we've reviewed the agreement. We're comfortable. This provides the onus, of course, on the city. The counties cooperating and collaborating on this, on the bypass or economic development corridor studies. But this does provide for the city to carry its piece, and that'll be reflected in the MOU.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve consideration of MOU with city of LaPorte for local matching funds for economic development corridor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Next on the agenda is consider property and liability insurance renewal for 2020, 21 policy period, Mr. Jones.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the commission. Or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
John Jones, Michigan Insurance Services. If I may, Madam President, can I approach and give you a revised spreadsheet that we'll work off of today?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So you can discard the one that I emailed, and we'll work strictly off of this one. As it's changed, it's a little more reader-friendly. And I worked after hours last night with underwriters to actually find some relief on premium increase, I'm happy to report. My glasses on. I sized this to fit on one page. First off, I'd like to mention what I alluded to in the email addressing this year's renewal scheduled for May 27th. What seems to be a state of hardened market in this public sector space of insurance, and really in personal lines as well and all over, due to a lot of different cases. And when I say hardening of the market, I don't strictly mean increasing a premium. I mean some, some new strategies on capacity. So sometimes there are higher minimums, lower excess amounts that are being offered to folks, and so on. And there's many reasons for that. I started reading white papers and listening to opinions and having conversations with underwriters as early as last fall. And because of those great unknowns, I started to scramble a bit and started to dig and scratch on behalf of LaPorte County to meet with your department heads, which have been phenomenal, including Darlene Hale, which I don't know if she's still here or not.
She's outside, yeah.
In fact, I met with her team, Steve Alt's team for IT, as well as the Sheriff's Department for ITs, because we maintain three domains here in the county to, to fill out several applications for cyber liability, anticipating what, where we may go with our, our current carrier. So I, I guess I don't really need to, unless you have questions about the hardening of the market, I've got lots of white paper information here on what's driving that. The lower limit capacities, I talked about, higher attachments, higher minimums. The litigious space has been changing, the larger losses, softer amenities, abuse cases, and extended statutes of limitations on those have become large. Average cost of employment-related claims is rising along with the length of time it takes to resolve those cases. Legal costs are driving some of those, but law enforcement claims continue to rise, and settlements are increasing as public trust in law enforcement seems to be an all-time low. Where we once talked about local and state-level marketing, we're now talking about a national level of hardening of the insurance-based marketing. So I look for that to proceed into 2020. I'm committed to, to the job of making sure that I'm finding the very best coverage at the lowest premium for you. And with that said, I'll, I'll move to that spreadsheet that I provided to you. And I'm gonna leave property, I'm gonna skip over property and cyber till the end because those had the largest material changes, which I'll explain for both you and your counsel here in a bit. But looking at crime across the first line, we have a Chubb crime application that we've used in the past to large claim. That has remained flat for the last three years, and this year they took a 3% increase. The change for the crime insurance with that $10,000 deductible and a $500,000 limit is $194 increase for this year. Property on the first spreadsheet that I sent you had increased dramatically to almost $10,000, it was $9,000. As of last night, I was able to negotiate that down to a $5,000, $5,610 increase for property coverage. I'll return to that here in a minute because that has some caveats with it as well with some changing deductibles. Auto-physical, we saw a decrease of $3,171. Really, the county losses for auto have been phenomenal. They've been really good. The folks are pretty good in that area with driving habits and claims that have been reported. General liability, there are smaller increases for base liabilities with this trend of the hardening of the market. $801 increase for GL. Employment benefits liability, we saw a $2 increase. Law enforcement liability, we're up $4,119. Public entity management liability, which is all your heirs and emissions and, and coverages that extend to all of your boards and volunteers in the county as well as elected officials and employees. That's up $1,665. Employment practices liability, $2,589. Auto liability is up $8,175. And our excess umbrella is up $1,359. Now, looking at that, I'll, I'll, I'll circle back to cyber liability, which is actually next on the line that you're seeing highlighted in yellow. Down below in the options, I left it as an option just because it's our, our current provider for cyber is Travelers. You'll remember that we had a $100,000 per-line limit leading up to the July 7th claim that we had. That limit had been exhausted in, in two or three lines of that coverage. I went back and met with Darlene and those folks in November of last year. And we started to develop applications, several applications. And in fact, since that time with Darlene, so Darlene and I have written a comprehensive claim summary of what went on. We then wrote a second addendum to that claim summary that showed nine controls that reinstituted post-claim of July 2019. And it was a phenomenal job that was done and performed by Darlene and her team and LaPorte County as a whole, along with the experts that were provided, the panel of experts that were provided via Travelers. All those recommendations were followed, as well as others that Darlene instituted. And it impressed all of the other carriers. So I was able to garner quotes from Great American, XL, Beasley, Chubb, and Travelers. Chubb is the best quote that I have. Travelers went from a $17,000 premium last year prior to the claim to a $6,000 pro-rated increase post-claim, so we could reset those limits. We reset them at five times what we had originally. We went from a $100,000 per-line limit to a half a million. That increased, if we extrapolated that out for the year, that would have been a $12,000 increase and would have put us at about a $30,000 annual premium for that Travelers cyber. However, I was surprised to see that they put some more premium on top of that this year for our renewal, and they proposed a $47,000, $742 renewal premium. Luckily, we have a, a Chubb quote that came in that I, that was the lowest of, of the five. And the Chubb liability came in at $25,707, which is a decrease over the previous Travelers of $4,418. We also had some TPA relief this year because of reduced claims and good solid risk management control of $5,251. So with my recommended Chubb cyber coverage that we, that we, I asked the commissioners to actually cancel non-renew Travelers for May 27th and replace that with the Chubb plan, the Chubb proposal. Our increase overall for the entire package would be $11,674. And that's come down from over $40,000 where we started if we would have just stayed in our same position. So I worked hard to bring it down to that $11,000 level. It's still an increase that I would rather not present to you. I did reach out to Travelers, and I had Travelers was promising. They looked at our losses for property. We already have them for our lines of liability, but I asked them to look at, at coming in and giving us a proposal to go up against Chubb for property. They thought they could be very competitive. However, with COVID-19, their rule across all of Travelers, if you have more than 50 million in PML, multiple-location properties, that they must do an onsite risk control inspection of the jail. And they're unwilling to do that at this time. They're unwilling to send somebody over to inspect. So they look forward to jumping in and giving us a competitive quote next year, but they declined to do so this year. So with that, I'm recommending the package in front of you. Prior to voting on that, you will see three options below. Not necessarily recommending those, but I will offer those to you. The Chubb property option number one raises the property level from that 114 to 117 because the caveat is with the, with the Chubb proposal for property at 114,679. the caveat is with the Chubb proposal for property at $114,679, they are proposing to increase deductibles on three buildings. The county complex that we're in right now, they want to move it from a $25,000 roof wind inhale deductible to $100,000. They also want to move the juvenile services center and the community corrections building from a $25,000 roof deductible, not talking about any other claims other than roof, roof wind inhale, from a $25 to a $50,000 deductible. They're offering to give you option one at a cost of an additional $2,727 to only move this building to a $50,000 deductible, and putting back the JSC and the community corrections building to a $25,000 deductible. It's your call on that. Not a lot of money, but then again, we can afford probably to pay those deductibles if and when we would have a roof claim to those three buildings. And we can look forward to maybe a better situation as I bring a new quote in next renewal. The second option was the Travelers liability lines. We currently have a $500,000 SIR, which I'll tell you right now, that's not even available with most carriers anymore. If you have law enforcement and EMS and jail operations, some of them are at $1 million now for minimum, and down to $600,000, but 500 is kind of a nominal. I did quote out a $300,000 SIR, which I've done in years past. Over the last five years, every time I've asked for that option, it's been $65,000. This year, it's $90,000, or $95,000, excuse me. So $30,000 swing there. And I'll tell you that I took a look back at your losses, your large losses over the last six years, and I don't think it bears out. And Shaw can jump in on that, because I know he's keenly aware of what's going on, all that comes across his desk. But in 2014, we would have pierced that $300,000 SIR with one claim. That was a $308,000 claim. And then again, in 2018, we had a large claim that would have pierced the 300,000, but not the 500,000. All of the claims were under that $500,000 cap. That large claim in 2018 was a large one at $496,000. However, out of the six larger claims that I'm looking at, none of them would have paid for that $30,000 premium. The last option, I left the cyber, Travelers cyber liability option in there, that they're proposing at $47,742, and I'm recommending we change that out for the Chubb. Again, I showed you the increases that those options would do under the adjusted totals column, and if you chose all three options, the adjusted total would increase everything by $89,000. The subjectivities that I mentioned about deductibles are in that box at the bottom, and it should outline there pretty much what I've just given you in my presentation.
John, you're recommending the entire, the Chubb, as you're recommending?
I'm recommending that we, you know, I'll bring paperwork if you make a motion eventually here for the president to be available for those signatures at some point, that we actually cancel Travelers for cyber only, and that we move forward with the application and the proposal that we've been given for Chubb cyber.
And I should note, members of the commission, President Matisse, members of the commission, you can imagine the work that our liability agent of record has done in the middle of this pandemic, with markets up and down, the volatility out there, to get the pricing that he was able to get with this nominal increase is nothing short of extraordinary. So I do want to pay credit where credit is due. This has taken a remarkable amount of work to, and I know he was negotiating right up to the 11th hour with a couple of the carriers, so I think he's got reason to be proud of the package.
Persistence sometimes pays off, and it saved us a few thousand dollars this time.
Madam President, I'm sorry. John, in the top box here, if I do not see this option, I've looked at the options, but if you just look at the top one.
Yes.
So our total right now is 788,800. And then with switching to the cyber liability to Chubb, and then the total will go up by $11,674.
Correct.
And so basically, that seems to be a reasonable option for me.
And I know I've taken a lot of your time already, but there's, I would like to expound just a little bit more on the new Chubb cyber, if I would, if I can. Because we moved from $100,000 per line to that 500,000, five times the amount, we are now doubling that and going to a $1 million coverage as well with Chubb. I asked them for an apples-to-apples quote at that half a million, because I thought that, you know, possibly the commissioners would entertain that as being sufficient. However, that's not available. Their product is at a million, it's a million aggregate and a million per line. I need to let you know that we were at a $10,000 retention, it'll now be a $25,000 retention, but that is probably the only downside to this changeover. Because some of the other highlights that we are gaining now, first of all, Chubb and ACE is, ACE is an A++ rated AM best rating carrier. They have full prior acts coverage, which is important, because as you know, Darlene estimated that there was somebody fishing around quite a few months prior to our actual attack last time. So what that means on prior acts is that if something does occur as we leave one and move to another, they recognize that we have been diligent in the fact that we've had coverage, and they're gonna cover full prior acts into the new period. So that's important. They've also got full limit cyber incident response team coverage when the panel firms are used. So just like we did with Travelers, we called the 1-800 number and send us a breach coach, which is really the best way to go anyway. If we don't use their panel, we've got a quarter of a million, $250,000 limit available. And that's basically saying, if you want to go out on your own, we're gonna give you a quarter of a million. If you want to take our experts, we're gonna give you a million dollars. So it's really a no-brainer to use their experts anyway. They're there, they have to react, they've got a commitment to react, and we saw with Travelers a very good reaction time. I think that Mr. Friedman and Darlene will both attest to that. This new policy also brings with it full limit business interruption coverage with an eight-hour waiting period, and full limit contingent business interruption with an eight-hour waiting period. Contingent business interruption would be if a person that we relied on to do business, a vendor or a contracted partner, was breached, and they were down for a month or two and it affected our operations, we'd have coverage for that as well. That's big. Full limit data recovery, full limit network extortion, full limit cyber privacy and network security coverage, full limit regulatory proceedings coverage, full limit payment card loss coverage, full limit electronic, social, and printed media coverage, computer fraud and funds transfer coverage, and telecommunications theft coverage, which is included within the base policy, provided at the full policy limit, and which may and may not be covered in a crime policy, so we may be double-covered there, but that's a good situation to have. So I'm really pleased that this is a stronger, better, double-covered, limited, reduced premium product that I'm able to provide to you today.
Madam President, I make a motion that we move forward with the total package of $800,474.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Yeah, I have a question first, but I will second the motion now. Chubb, are they a local company?
Chubb, as far as local, Chubb is the largest property carrier in the world now. They combine there with ACE, so they're all over the entire world. They're not local at all.
I thought it was your nickname, it's, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Rick.
They're getting squirrely, we need some food.
Is it COVID? Yeah, I know, when we first decided to get this cyber liability a couple of years ago there, when, there was a couple of members of the council didn't think it was even necessary. July 7th, we found that out. And, you know, I just, what, day before yesterday, finished my new five-part cybersecurity thing we do online for, man, that right there, out of lower rate. But it certainly is necessary. But what I'm gonna ask you, this is kind of looking down the road, when we put $24 million in a new courthouse in Michigan City, is that gonna, would that increase our insurance rate because it's worth so much more, or would it decrease it because it's newer? I've just...
Both. It's gonna increase premium rate, you know, you're paying like 34 cents on $100 for property. But it's also gonna serve favorably with underwriters because of it being newer, so there's gonna be credit supply. So that's actually a great question, and that formulary will work itself out and bear some fruit in both directions, I guess, but...
Cool.
The other thing that we still have on the property schedule that'll help bring that rate back to zero on that increase is that we currently still have the county home listed in several buildings out there, in fact. And I was just talking to Larry a little bit ago, and I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll be removing probably 11 properties, believe it or not, out there, 11 buildings. And we'll maintain the barn and possibly the silo, I have to talk to Larry about that, but what's included in that transfer of that sale that occurred. So that's gonna come off the schedule, and of course, that'll move that down prorated for whatever time we remove that, and possibly even before renewal.
Great.
So we have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the package as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I can get some signatures to you later.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda, consider signing on to an amicus or friend of the court brief to be filed in the US Supreme Court by cities and counties defending the Affordable Care Act.
Madam President, even though it's a legal issue, and attorney needs, Mr. Friedman needs to go first, but on this one, I'm gonna go first. And the reason is because it's a health care issue. And I want to thank Mr. Haney for staying back, because on surface, it may appear, why are we signing amicus in United States Supreme Court? Because it affects most of us in our county. And the reason why a lot of people, it's not even on the radar of a lot of people, because a lot of people don't even know what is gonna happen if the Affordable Care Act is struck down, and there is no replacement. There will be an utter chaos, there will be people without health care, and it will be a disaster. Madam President, if the Affordable Care Act is struck down, 11.5 million people who currently are on getting their insurance through the exchanges, they will lose their insurance. 12.5 million people who currently are getting insurance through Medicaid expansion, they lose their insurance. So that is about 24 million people without insurance. Now, how does it affect locally? In the state of Indiana, the Medicaid expansion was achieved through something called the HIP 2.0, Healthy Indiana Plan 2.0. And the money for the HIP 2.0 comes through the Affordable Care Act. So if this is gone, 400,000 people in our state will lose insurance, and many thousands of them reside right here in La Porte County, and I see many of them. And they will be without medications, and they will be without access to health care. In addition, to 400,000 of HIP 2.0 who are gonna lose insurance, there'll be 200,000 people who currently get insurance through the healthcare exchange in the state of Indiana, the healthcare.gov. So total number of people impacted in the state of Indiana will be 600,000. They will lose insurance. But there are other aspects to the Affordable Care Act. And what those are, I know you're all hungry to eat lunch, but this is important. First of all, people who are on Medicare, because of the Affordable Care Act, their donut hole was getting smaller and smaller, till ultimately disappeared. Now, so what happens is, when you are in a donut hole, you pay the full price for the prescriptions, all Medicare patients. But because of the elimination of the donut hole, it was brought down to 25%, and it remains at 25%. So when the donut hole, when this reduction in the donut hole is eliminated as a result of striking down the Affordable Care Act, our seniors in our county are going to pay a lot more money for their prescriptions when they are in the donut hole. Now, what impact does it have on individuals who have commercial employer-based insurance? Right now, they were able to carry their children till the age of 26 on their insurance. They cannot do it anymore. People who had pre-existing conditions, they could not be denied insurance. That protection will be gone. Right now, there are no lifetime limits because of the Affordable Care Act. That protection is gone, so people who develop cancer, and if their expenses go beyond the limits, then they'll end up filing for bankruptcies. In addition, because of the Affordable Care Act, for preventive services like pap smears, mammograms, colonoscopies, there were no copays, there were no deductibles. But when the Affordable Care Act goes away, then they will not, they'll have to pay out of their pocket for all these services. So, Madam President, when the Affordable Care Act is, a lot of people don't even know what is happening. This started because the state of Texas wanted to, they filed a lawsuit, and then there are a lot of other states who filed, who joined the state of Texas, and they want to get rid of the Affordable Care Act. And there are a lot of other states who are fighting against it, because they see the insanity of this action. First of all, even under normal circumstances, if all these protections are gone, it is bad. But in the middle of a pandemic, frankly, it's insane. That's how I feel about this. I feel that so many people in our county will be impacted by this action, that by filing this amicus brief, I think we'll be doing a good job in protecting the health and well-being of the citizens of La Porte County. And I strongly support it, and I make a motion to go ahead and do this. Now I leave the legal things to the lawyers.
I could, I tell you, Dr. Cora did a beautiful job laying out the particulars in terms of why this is merited. As you know, maybe much of the public may know, Dr. Cora was present in the Rose Garden when President Obama signed the Affordable Care Act back in 2010. The act has survived several challenges over the years. It's meant health care coverage, as you say, for 20 million Americans that didn't exist before passage. Unfortunately, our Attorney General in the state, 18 of his colleagues, joined in a suit to try to invalidate the ACA without a meaningful alternative ready to replace it. That suit is now pending in front of the US Supreme Court. If you choose to go ahead today, there is nominal cost involved for the county, it's not as if we're preparing the brief, it is not as if we're gonna be arguing it in front of the Supreme Court. What you would simply be doing is joining other counties and cities that are going on record as a signatory. Essentially, we'd authorize the lead counsel, who are from the city of Chicago and Santa Clara County, California, to put the name of La Porte County on as a signing county, joining many other counties across the country and cities across the country in support of this brief, which is being filed with the Supreme Court. In fact, the deadline is tomorrow for signatories to sign on. We'll have nominal costs, we'll review the proposed brief, that's about it, but there's no travel, there's no preparation of brief time or anything else. But with your vote today, if that's your preference, you go on record with this defense of the Affordable Care Act that cities and counties across the country are going on record with before the US Supreme Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Merzansky?
I'm sure everybody knows there's been as much negative with the Affordable Care Act as there was positive. And I understand all your points, and I agree with that. But, and I've got a lot of calls on this, the horror stories. One in particular that I'll read, where a guy was paying $4,300 a year for insurance, for him and his wife, with $5,000 deductible. With the Affordable Care Act, it went up to $14,800 a year with $6,000 deductible. I can't in good conscience sign on this, I won't second it, and I'll abstain.
Okay. Then I'll go ahead and second the motion. You know, let's just talk about the young people who were able to stay on their parents' insurance. Let's talk about those with pre-existing... Let's talk about those with preexisting conditions and almost all of us know of someone or are one ourselves who, um, were denied care in, uh, in previous, um, be, before the Affordable Care Act. The families that need, need, um, HIP point, uh, 2.0 to make sure that their babies, um, get the care that they need as newborns. The maternal care, uh, for, um, the women of La Porte County. Um, it's, it would be, um, criminal to, to, um, unless there's something to replace it, which there is not. Um, we knew when a, the ACA went, went through that it, it was a work in progress, that it needed to be tweaked and amended and there were some things that needed to be fixed. But rather than fix those things and keep improving it, throwing it out is like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I've never heard Dr. Cora in two sentences use the word insanity and insane. Um, and here's someone who is on the front lines of healthcare for our, for La Porte County residents and our families. And so, um, I strongly endorse the idea that we sign on as a friend of the court for this brief, um, to the U.S. Supreme Court.
Madam President, before we vote, I want to, to two other comments. First of all, when this came up, the, it's the Department of Justice that is going to go in front of the U.S. Supreme Court. And I, I heard that, um, our Attorney General Bill Barr had serious reservations about doing this. I, I don't know if you read it in, in the press. He had serious reservations because in the middle of a pandemic, throwing 24 million people out without insurance, uh, it, it absolutely doesn't, doesn't make sense. Not only that, Madam President, there are very few things on which the physicians, the hospitals and the insurance companies agree on. And this is one side of, some of the rare moment where all of us agree that doing this and suddenly throwing this out will create such a chaos in the healthcare marketplace that a lot of people, uh, will be left without insurance, without prescriptions. And that's happening during a pandemic, uh, is, is, is something that's very difficult to comprehend. Uh, that, that, those were my comments.
Thank you. Um, those in favor of the, uh, of the, um, motion, uh, excuse me, the resolution, uh, on signing, uh, as friend of the court for the filing with, in front of the U.S. Supreme Court, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consider resolution of support in favor of, uh, establishing 25 small business COVID-19 lifeline grants of $10,000 each funded by the just announced and granted, um, state OKRA grant of $250,000 to the county of La Porte and select public sector and private sector appointees to a committee to conduct the grant application review and, and awards. Tony Rodriguez from the Office of Community and Economic Development and Matt Reardon are here to, um, to address us.
Madam President, members of the, uh, commission, um, very excited to be before you, uh, this afternoon. Started out this morning, but, uh, the crowds dwindled. And, and this is quite frankly, uh, one of the most exciting things that, uh, comes out of a tragic situation is our ability to be, uh, to, to step in and provide an assist to what is estimated to be 25 companies. Uh, this coming, uh, what I've handed out prior to the meeting, uh, Madam President, is a, uh, three documents that is what will be placed online and was, uh, the, quite frankly, was authored by, uh, Mr. Reardon, who's with us today, uh, that, and, and it'd be, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the quality of the documents were such that the state, uh, regional director is utilizing those documents as his template with all of his other, uh, grant communities. So it's nice to know we have, um, a, uh, a direct conduit to what will become the, the standardized set of documents, form of documents. Just very, again, I, uh, the grant amount is $250,000. It is a non-match requirement, uh, no local funds other than our administrative, uh, support, which will be, uh, will be in kind. Um, and this coming Tuesday, we're going to be participating in the Community Development Block Grants mandatory training session. And what that's going to do is, uh, allow a group discussion to ensue and there will be, uh, quite frankly, the direction and an agreed upon method of rolling out the program will be conducted by, by the state. So we're excited, participate in that. And at that point in time is when we hope to receive the guidance and a really a final determination on whether or not, uh, the need will be, uh, there for us to, to reform or add to or eliminate, uh, any members to what is now. At the time in which we, we applied to the, to the grant, the, our proposal was to have the redevelopment serve as an existing, uh, publicly appointed entity that could pivot and become the body to, to really organize, review in an independent way, review the applicants for this grant. So we are, and I don't know if Attorney Friedman would, would care to comment i- in regard to this, but we, uh, we believe that they may, and I, I believe it does come back to the local level and whether or not, uh, there would be any prohibition by, by HUD to, to allow the Redevelopment Commission to be that body.
So I think we were rethinking it. We've had some discussion and, um, and just let me jump in. We were not anticipating when we presented to OKRA on the technical assistance call where I, uh, was working with you. We didn't present it as a, they would be a committee underneath the Redevelopment Commission. What we tried to present to them is that we have this board already in place. They, they could be made into a committee in particular focused on this grant. It would not be under the redevelopment statutes or the redevelopment umbrella. But the fact that we have a broad based group of individuals who currently work together, they understand economic development, they understand our infrastructure, they understand the, uh, county ED issues, um, that they would be, they, they can, they, uh, are already in place. They, they, even though they aren't operating under the Redevelopment Commission statutes, they currently cover a broad range. They're appointed, they're elected, they represent various geographic areas of the county as well as different industries. And so that seemed to be a natural because it's quick and, and when we spoke with OKRA, they seemed to think that that was a good idea. But I just wanted to be really clear, they were not operating under redevelopment statutes because that would not, that would not be okay. Um, they, they would be a local committee made up of the, the same individuals who work on the redevelopment things, but it's separately comprised, um, mission, vision and, um, authority.
The, if I could add to what Commissioner Mathias has said, the benefit apparently during the application process was OKRA liked the fact that we had individuals in place who could, who could serve, but this would be a separate committee appointed by the commission, just happens to be the same members of the Redevelopment Commission. We've suggested the auditor serve as an ex officio so that she's passing on, on all of the applications as well, since the money still has got to be routed through the auditor's office. But, uh, you know, all I've heard is, uh, a great enthusiastic response from people in the community who are pleased that this commission, the Office of Economic Development, uh, yourselves are working so hard at lifeline grants to try to help get money to businesses now, uh, so that this thing is nimble, it's quick, you can convene very quickly, uh, if you authorize that. You've got, uh, applications that are designed and approved by OKRA because they're using them as a model. Uh, so the sooner you can get word out and, and, uh, let's get the auditor intimately involved in that process as well, so that whenever the committee meets, uh, it's got the auditor's guidance and input as well. So I, that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, this is a, this is supposed to be rapid recovery money and, um, we don't want to do anything that prolongs and adds layers of bureaucracy. It's for 25 small businesses who do not, are not located in the city of Michigan City or in the county, in the city of La Porte, but are out in our county to cover payroll costs, inventory, rent, utility costs, equipment lease and transportation costs. So things that are real guts issues for, for our business community. I've already heard from people, I know you've already heard from people, I'm sure Matt has as well, saying, thank you, where do I sign up? There's many more than 25 that will need this, but this is our first, uh, I'm, I'm proud to say it was our first crack at this, at this money and we were successful to the maximum. Uh, 250 was the maximum allowed. We asked for 250 and we were granted this by the state. So I think, uh, I commend you and Matt for the hard work you've done to get us operational. I love the idea that the state thinks we're so great in La Porte County that they're copying us. Imitation is the greatest form of flattery. And, um, so I, I would suggest that we move on this as quickly as, as possible.
Does this need a motion then?
Yes, it would.
So, so moved. And I also want to thank both, uh, you, Tony and Matt for getting this going. And I think we can support certified small businesses, uh, like a lifeline, like Commissioner Mathias has said. So I'm, I'm fully on board with this.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second to, um, support this, um, um, process of establishing 25 small business grants of $10,000 each funded by the OKRA grant that the county of La Porte received for $250,000 to provide lifeline grants, uh, during the COVID crisis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has carried. Thank you. Commissioner, thank you, thank you, Tony. Uh, Commissioner's comments on Mr. Mrazinski?
Yeah, we've been living on Zoom meetings here. Not only do we have our weekly, uh, two meetings with, uh, Commissioner Schula and then also with Randy, uh, for our COVID, uh, task force, uh, I've been meeting online, uh, Zoom with fellow commissioners from around the Northwest District, uh, and also LEAF, our Legislative Affairs Committee, uh, Mr. Pressle and Mr. Dermott have been putting on, uh, Zoom meetings with local business owners. Uh, and, you know, where else could you be able to put together people like that on that short of a notice to, to have a meeting? Um, and we, we talked about it with the other commissioners, they're all in favor of, of approaching our state legislators formally saying, we want this to be the new way of life. We want to be able to do this, to have meetings and to be able to participate on Zoom.
After coronavirus.
When condition, yeah, like make it permanent. When, when conditions warrant that, that that's the best way to do things. So I would like to propose that we, uh, compose a letter, maybe have Shaw compose a letter to our legislative, that we will sign on to it, uh, as a concerted effort that we, that we want to continue doing this because when how long's it going to last and what's going to be next?
Well, you're absolutely right because it needs to be a legislative change and, and our legislators need to hear from local elected officials to say, look, this is still a nice format to be able to have. Uh, you've been able to convene various sessions that way. And so going on record will be helpful as we direct something then to the, to the legislative.
Senator Bahacik is on that committee that would hear it and he said that he would carry it if we.
So should we, should we ask to prepare a resolution for our next meeting so it's actually a, a resolution rather than a, than a letter?
They have to.
I, I think that's great. Um, you know, it's funny, Darlene and I have a little story about, about Zoom. So you may remember I had surgery in, in December and I was feeling bad that I would have to miss meetings. So I said, you know, I use Zoom for my other job, could we do Zoom? And we were like, oh, people aren't going to really like this format. But you know, now that we are using it and people who even aren't high tech people are enjoying using it, it saves gasoline, so it's got a great environmental impact. If you can be anywhere in the world and zoom, zoom into a meeting, where, so we're getting better participation, I would say, uh, you know, making sure that people who want to, want to weigh in on issues, it's, it doesn't, you know, you can take 15 minutes and jump on a call and, um, not have to get in your car and drive 20 miles. Uh, so I think from time, from scheduling, from making sure that people are able to participate and get their voices heard, and it has a great environmental impact. I think it's a, it's a wonderful, uh, wonderful tool we should continue to use.
You can imagine trying to put a bunch of county commissioners together for, for the whole state and we have to all drive to Indianapolis, drive three hours to have a two hour meeting.
Yeah, it's costly, yes.
It's crazy. But this is the, I think it will be the new way of doing things. I, I want to think, a little bit of good news. Uh, back in World War II, there was a submarine, the United States submarine, the USS Greyback, uh, 10 combat missions and they were fierce. Uh, then on their 10th mission, they went missing. They have been missing since 1944 with 80 American sailors in it. And it, the reason it took them so long to find it, it wasn't where they thought it was. It was radio silence, it was, they thought it was here because they just blew up a bunch of Japanese ships, but it had gone somewhere else before it was sank. But they finally found it and they're going to bring our 80 sailors back home. Good news. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Cora?
Yeah, I think we had a long meeting. All I'm aware of is saying, all I'm going to say is this, I never thought I will get into telemed, I've been pushed into telemedicine so fast and, but I agree with all the comments that were made. Uh, I have been communicating with many of the patients. Obviously I see some patients in person, uh, but many of them who I don't need to, I can manage on the phone or, uh, through video calls and I've been able to do it. It's been very effective, very effective, especially some of the elderly. If we can get them a little bit more tech savvy and we can work with it, then they don't have to have a family member drive them to the office and things like that. So, um, uh, out of this whole tragedy, I think there are some positive things that are also coming out and, uh, with that, I'm going to conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Dr. Cora, I think you spoke more at this meeting than I've heard you in a while, but with such passion, uh, but I, I would agree that telemedicine and Zoom has changed our lives and, and that may be a silver lining. There's been some other silver linings as well, uh, one of them being how close our community has pulled together to help each other around, uh, food insecurity and around, um, around taking care of one another. Um, I'm getting a lot of questions from people saying, you know, are you going to go back to life as normal? And I, I have to say, um, if our community can hear us, we still have the coronavirus here. Uh, we cannot let down our guard because it is in our community. It's, um, not just in one location, it's spread throughout our community. Maybe not as high as numbers because we did practice social distancing early, but please, please, please take every precaution to protect you and your family until we know that we flatten the curve, which right now we cannot be sure that we have. So wearing masks, um, social distancing, only making essential, essential trips to the store, et cetera, I, I think is, uh, really just using real good common sense. So with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.